How many more part-time people do you need? How's it looking with bringing?
Here's that.
Wow, when I got it. I was probably because.
We're just.
You have a lot.
Right after that. On the north.
The east-west sidewalk that's north of the bandstand, that's where those lights will go. And there's a contract to have that done and they'll be put on pillars, brick pillars to match the courthouse again. So we'll have those lights. And then we have some trees that Denise Fletcher was on our committee and Dirk Henley, who helped us a lot on this project, your maintenance supervisor, they're going to put some trees wherever you would like them, you know, somewhere north of the bandstand, but maybe out in the courtyard a little bit. And there's a lady from Tama who's donated those trees. So we'll get that done. And again, I want to thank Karen here for all of her help on this project. But thanks for everyone that's helped. Dave, thanks for coming to the dedication and that really worked out well. And I think it's going to be a nice asset for the county and for the cities, for the bandstand during the farmer's market. The next, the next project we're thinking about, I'll be back. The next project we're thinking about is these vacant lots across the street. Part of one of those lots is under tax sale. We'll have to get a title to that and the attorneys are going to help us with that. But we're going to put a pocket park over there of some kind. And then on that east wall, in fact, as you've got a picture back here of J.W. Crimina shoe store, and that's the wall. And we're going to, I'm going to say that we get a mural put up there. And I'd like to have this mural depict Tama County. That's what I'd like to have featured on it. Similar to the mural that we did at the abstract office. And I've got some ideas and I want to mention to you folks, so if you think of more, just call me, call my cell phone anytime. 641-751-6822. But here's what I'm thinking about, featuring Tama County, Tama Jim Wilson. I'm going to get approval from everybody before I do any of this, of course. Abraham Lincoln, he has the 40 acres out north of town. Abe got that for fighting the Black Hawk War. But I've been to New Salem a few times and Abe said, I never fired a shot. We're going to feature the Sackin Fox east of the Mississippi. The farms, maybe like Duffy Lyons Farm, the Lyons Jersey Farm, maybe Pioneer, Iowa Premium. And then maybe like Matchstick Marbles or something in Disher or Trader. And we'll just see, got some ideas. And if any of you have any ideas for the future, we won't be doing this till next year. We have a committee that's working on the pocket park. And that's Catherine Oladec, our Economic Development Director, and Jeff Shaw, who used to work at the juvenile homes, retired now. And they have a committee that's going to be working on the pocket park. That's going to take a little more planning, estimates as to the cost, we might be able to get some grants for it. So, and I'll be back. So again, I want to thank all of you for your help and your donations on this project. We had donations from all over. We got a donation on November 10th, an anonymous gift for the bandstand of $1,500. Now, isn't that good? Somebody must really be interested in bands. We had a nice dedication. We had Mike Carnahan, our band instructor from South Tama, with the Tama County, with the county community band. They did part of the dedication. So again, thank you. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer the question.
I have one. When I saw the two lawyers standing on the sidewalk, was that the pocket park you were talking about?
Yeah.
When you were in my ground, I was a little concerned.
That's one of the two lawyers that was Brendan.
Okay.
No, Mike, Mike, Mike bought that vacated alley when they vacated the alley just east of the abstract office.
Okay.
Mike bought that. At one time, he was thinking about maybe building an office there on those lots. But so he'll deed that over. It'll all be deeded over to the city. So when, on that project, it'll be a nonprofit project too. So if you have any thoughts on that.
A few real estate hoops to fire at first. These legal real estate hoops to fire are honestly probably going to be our topless piece.
Yeah.
Just to get everybody on the same page.
I just saw them talking. I'm not even concerned with the two lawyers talking.
Yeah, you want to be careful.
No, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you, thank you so much.
That's 2080 agreement. It's what we've looked at in the past. The draft actually came through six weeks ago now, and it had a shared responsibility for booking the bandshell. And I went and talked to Karen, and that's never been done in the past. Even Kim at the city said, no, 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 it's always gone through the city. Let's not convolute this. So this is the final draft version, pretty boilerplate. Does the city, I did wonder this after the weekend, does the city like email you when we do a booking or? Then I may come up with a calendar that you would have availability to go look at. So if the county ever wanted to see what's going on over there, you could see the calendar. But otherwise, calls that come into you now, you should, you shift them to the city. So same thing will happen. And the city's planning on signing off on this tonight. You guys are just going to beat them to the punch.
Do we not have a 2080 today? Is this like something new?
I, I think it's always just.
No, we don't.
Yeah.
No, I'm sure. We never had anything, you know.
Okay.
Yes.
It looks like you'll have insurance and a lot.
Yes, yeah, we've got all of that. Yes, we know.
And that's all been in place before, but.
But right.
When we did the bandshell update, that's when the attorneys.
We want to get it in. Oh, there it is, Jeff, right there.
Yeah, I think the calendar share is a good idea because like if there's an event that we approve that, you know, like a Bible reading or this or that. You guys are already doing it. We don't want to double booking or some guy, but, but yes.
We'll have things like that that come up.
Right.
You have different groups that like to use it.
For sure.
Thanks, thanks again for, you're doing a good job.
Again.
One suggestion for the mural, if you could do like Case International Harvester Tractors only.
John there didn't give us a donation.
Class for donations.
We'll be reaching out to the cities because, because that mural will depict the entire county. We already have some things in place right now. The QRC codes that lead you to the check trail. The QRC codes that lead you to Matchstick Museum or Salt and Pepper Shaker Gallery. We'll make sure we go back through and all those QRC codes will be available in like a county, essentially like a digital walking tour of the county that you can click and take it to wherever you want. So that wall will kind of market the whole county.
What else is in a pocket park? Like I was saying, if the farmer's market's being held, could there be like little things that kids could do? Like a little slide, your mirror, like, I don't know what you're all.
Be careful when we start doing like liability issues, playgrounds and that kind of stuff. But we'd like to see it have some shape. A couple of natural garden areas.
Yep.
Low maintenance is like Kendall's number one thing. So we're trying to take each person that's gotten touch it and say, what's your number one priority?
Yeah.
And then we take all those priorities and funnel them into a plan. But it's a pretty big space. I mean, it's, it's a pretty big space. But we're trying to get more of these apartments going downtown. We just rented our first one at the end of the block. So we have two more applications going through. I'm hoping by end of January, those three apartments are full. And then we've got people interested in the wood lawns. We want to start getting more activity downtown. We're working with the building owner over on the south side. How can we generate a little more foot traffic for downtown? Give the county employees someplace they can walk to lunch would be great.
Yeah.
Our rural counties, where they have to fight back.
Splash pad would be.
The city would never get me to work. I'd be over at the splash pad all the time. All my meetings are at the splash pad.
Wishing to approve, I'll make that motion that we approve the 2080 agreement with the city of the bandstand and authorize with the chair to sign.
Also, I will.
It's second. Any discussion? All those in figures there? Wishing curious.
Get a copy from you with it.
Oh, after the meeting, I'll have him sign and then toss that by you after the council meets tonight.
And then offering you back a copy of all of this.
That's all for each meeting.
Station of possible action on Jim Kenny, our trust fund distribution files to you. We've got two items.
Hi, I'm Louis Gavin, the current vice, the chair of the council. Billy Van Hagens here with me. She's the vice chair. So this is the policy that I think you guys had seen, and it's like Ben County had a policy like this. And we kind of did a lot of altering to it to adapt it to Tama County. And it's really kind of what Karen and I had discussed, everybody discussed what you guys wanted to do. We tried to adapt it so that it was fair to all of the services in Tama County and the services outside of Tama County that that come into Tama County and be the first responder, transport patients. And so it's just an operating guideline really that of how we're going to do the whole trust fund. How it's going to be distributed, how everybody's going to go about asking for reimbursement for their, what they need from their, their allotted amount of the trust fund. How the trust fund is divided up, the money that comes in each half for the whole year. So this was the policy that we came up with. David, was helpful when we were going through this.
I, I have them in meetings.
He's seen it several times. Do you have any questions there? It's, it's got, it actually outlines in there, I think it's under, I don't remember which number it's on there. But it tells you how, to have the money is, it's a formula that most counties that have already done, started doing this for quite a few years, are dividing the money up. It's based on service, the square miles of service area plus number of calls per unit. And it's divided up. It's the fairest way to do that for everybody. And then a couple of services that already get a lot of the money, like Tama, is going to get a large share of it because they have so many calls. And all, it's all based on 911. It's not based on transfer, or transfers call. They've already said that they will probably allot some of their money to the services that don't get very much. It's needed to do that, but that's going to be on a voluntary basis so that everybody's getting a fair share of the money. And we're not going to treat the, the services outside of the county that are coming in, they're going to be, they're going to be treated the same way. So everybody's just treated fairly instead of, you know, just service of the new best and service period that you just felt like it was fair to just do it to everybody the same way. Especially since it's tax dollars.
So you ran this by like each of the cities and they're all good with it, correct? Like this was kind of the final step of approval?
Yeah, I just said, this Karen said this to me last.
Brett had, or he had seen the Benton County one and he didn't see any issues with it.
I just didn't know like if we bring, if they bring it by like, you know, trayers department and, you know, all the different individual.
All of the.
The board members have looked at it.
Well.
If they're there.
The advisory council.
Have the member from each and they've all looked at this.
Yeah, I mean, they have tried it.
Perfect. Okay.
So basically, this isn't based on cities. This is based on responding units or other systems. And so that's where the money's going to. It's not going specifically to the city. It's going to whatever services, the prayer area, the advisor area and so forth.
Yeah, you guys, so you guys will approve anything, but the process is going to be that they, whatever they need to spend, so the money has come in already. They're going to, whatever they spend, they have to send in their invoice, their request, all that. They're going to send it to us. We're going to look through it, make sure that it meets the criteria of the law. And then we'll send it to Karen.
And so then it'll go before you guys, before it actually can go to check it.
So there's actually three layers of making sure it's being, it's following the law. And they're not spending on things that it can't be spent on, or it's not going to things that, because this law is very specific, it has to go to EMS. So we're making sure that it's doing all that before it even gets to you guys for approval.
So they, they put into here an emergency fund so that, and they're holding back money and put this emergency fund and it will stop at half a million at that point, then the money will keep collecting. But that way, if one of the responding services has a major breakdown, they have to replace a unit. They can tap into that and then they have to pay it back.
Yeah, we're going to hold back 10% every year from the whole amount, like we're just not going to let it be spent over the next 15 years. But it can never exceed that 500,000.
What's next, Deb? We were, we had asked Brett to look at that. I think you, I've been on an email back and forth.
That's a different thing.
Yeah, the next one that she's going to talk about.
I don't get responses from him when I send stuff to him. I didn't know if this needed to go to him or not.
Like I said, he looked at the Ben County one and said, yeah, if the board wants to do something like that, he was okay with that, but.
We didn't alter the Benton County one a lot, except that theirs was, they had, they had broken everything down and subjects said like, you know, one service is going to get this amount, this one service is going to get that amount. We didn't put that in here because our dollar amounts are going to change over here.
I'll make a motion to accept both, taking EMS trust fund policy.
The move, also, I did it. Second, my question, how many bills finally get paid? Like, who's the final?
You guys, you guys are.
Sorry, just checking to get, is, in the, in the title, advisory, means like advise, you know, like no final decision made? So is, is that the nature of the committee? I read through it. It seems like that is, but is that what you're understanding? Yes, that it's an advisory role to the board?
Yes, that's the charter, the next piece that we're going to talk about. That's what I want, that's why we wanted that document in place, so that there was no misunderstanding of what our, what this community does. We've had a lot of questions from some of the towns about, because we have a service director from every service on that committee, which is actually suggested in the law. And then we tried to have a citizen, just, you know, but we never got, we got someone that said they could do it, but then they never showed up to any of the meetings. And then we have, we, I asked Stacy about somebody from the sheriff's department, but you know, anybody that came to it either. And we have public health there. She actually, now we have Lori from public health who are kind of treating her as the citizen. And then we have 911 and EMA on there. So I think it's a pretty broad group of people that does advisory. And then we wanted to make sure that citizens all knew that that's what we do. We look at EMS because we all touch EMS or we're all part of EMS. We see what everybody is, has a deficit in. And then that's what the money, what, what do you need based off your deficit? And then when, when they submit the bills or whatever, that's what will come to you guys. And then in January, according to the bill, we'll submit us a report after we analyze from what everybody tells us, what the deficits in the county are for EMS and how the money that we're getting is helping fix those deficits. That report will come to you guys. And then according to law, you have to post that within 14 days, which it's public information anyway. So, and everything we're doing is being published. All of our minutes, all of our agendas are on like the Tama County MS Association, but I'm excited that all gets posted right away.
Whenever you're talking about deviating out money, everybody wants to make sure they get their fair share. Their heads have been, MS is a pretty cooperative.
Oh, yeah, because we, like I said, it's, it's based off this formula. And everybody knows exactly what their square miles are. Everybody knows exactly what their call volume is. And we have a spreadsheet that then we say, this is how much money you're going to get. So they all each have kind of their own mini trust fund, so they all know exactly what their dollar amount is.
There's been very good input from all the services in Tama County, very cooperative.
I have to say, I've, I've served on federal boards, who've served on state boards. This is probably the most cooperative committee I've ever, we've served on.
There's motion in residence. All those in favor say aye. Central Service of Advisory Council operating.
We put, I put this together, all of us, you put through it every, all done. And I tried, I sent it to the county attorney and sat there for a while. We had another attorney look at it. That was a friend of one of our advisory members. It's just outlines our structure, what we do, what each committee member's job is, how we're going to elect officers to it, what their job is, points out very clearly that we don't have any money in our, the committee's not touching the money in respect to it, like we're not holding any money. It's, it's all held at the county level, all the judiciary is at the county level. We just felt this needed to be in place so that it would work on. The next trip that takes over the advisory will have something to guide them. There's nothing in the law. It just says you have to have an advisory board, suggest who should be on it. There's nothing in the, in the law that actually guides you of what that advisory board should do, other than the reports to the supervisors. guides you of what that advisory board should do, other than the reports to the supervisors.
Thank you for being proactive. Like you said, it's always good to have something so everybody knows what are we doing? How do we operate? You know, how do we elect, you know, advisory chairs and stuff? Well, that's a great idea. And I like that you're annually reviewing to like, you know, how is it benefiting us? Because that's good to, you know, for you guys to know, for the different, you know, advisory board members as well as citizens too, is how is it helping? Is it benefiting you? Or it is, but good to show that to everybody.
Worked, Kerry knows. I'm getting a lot, I'm getting a lot of phone calls from, from council, city council members and other people that are asking questions that, I mean, some of them I can't answer, but there's a lot of those, like what they can buy with it and all that. That's really how they can buy it. That's city council stuff that I, you know, we're not, their cities have to approve it, what they're buying. I, I can't, you know. All, all we're doing is making sure it fits the law. That's all we're doing.
Do you guys have an idea of how many representatives each entity will be appointing?
It's on the front, on the district membership. There's one member that's going to have voting and then there's an alternative, an alternate on each service.
Council composition. So we don't have the names listed there, but the.
It doesn't say how many there will be individuals.
Yeah, and then it just lists them out and then a poll answers something. There's 15, 14, 15 of them?
Yeah.
And then an alternative. So like both can go, the voting.
They can both go, but only one can vote.
So 15 to 30 people?
Yeah.
How many have you been seen?
They all 10.
They all 10?
Yeah.
We can tell you, it's a pretty full.
Yeah, they're, they're all there. The other thing though is we don't have community involvement like we ought to, like we see with almost every other board and county. There, there's not a lot of folks volunteering to show up. And so Lori's doing the citizen and
Stacy.
Stacy is filling the role for
Public Health.
Public Health, so let me have, that's, that's been appointed in every meeting, I think. But yes, everybody's been showing up.
And we do most of our meetings by Zoom and we make sure, and Karen always posts that, so citizens can come if they want to. And we do have a few non-members from different services that show up at meetings. We did a lot of face-to-face when we were trying to hash out service area and that kind of stuff. Services, non-Tama County services, what they were going to get. Some of the Benton County is not paying, they're non-service, non-Benton County services the same way they're paying their in-county ones. And that's been a point of contention. We wanted to make sure we weren't going to get into that kind of weeds. And so we want, so we just wanted to make sure when they were in there, if they knew, we were going to treat them differently. Because that's our service area and has been for 40 to 50 years. So there's, you know, they've been serving those citizens and those citizens believe the tax dollars are going to them. And we, when we were asking them to vote for this tax, we told them that wasn't, their service areas weren't going to change. We are going to require 20 with the out-of-county services that come into Tama. I think you guys required that anyway. We had talked about some of them had 2080 agreements with their townships. And they can't, we were told that has to stop, right?
Yes.
So that was kind of hard on some of them to understand it until we told them it was double taxing. So. We're at that point now where we've drafted a 2080 agreement that they can use to, as a guideline. I mean, I'm, I'm not telling them, I didn't think that it should come from us, like one from a county. Maybe it should. But then I think it needs to come from an attorney.
Are you guys going to develop a 2080 from this?
I, I just developed one from a 2080 agreement that I've written from an ambulance service I directed before. That had a 2080 agreement with another entity. I just used that as a guideline and I showed it to them. I think David was on that maybe. I just showed him and said, you can use this as a guideline to write a 2080 agreement. I'm not telling you to use this. And, but they have to, they have to do it, sign it, and then it's got to be, you guys have to sign, it's got to be a 2080 agreement with the county. Because you guys are in charge of money. And then it has to go to Secretary of State, so. I didn't know if you guys wanted a 28, standard 2080 agreement coming from you guys? Or if it was okay, they have to have their own 2080 agreement and you guys just sign whatever they get, they send it, send you.
I think, I don't know if the, I haven't looked at your, the code chapter. You know.
There's nothing in the, oh, there's nothing in the, this, this law?
The required.
No.
What it does is, it allows you to combine your, whatever the board powers are of the cities and accomplish a mission. That's essentially what you're doing here. This is, this is good for how, like I said, like the way it's going to operate and all of those kinds of things. Rules are going to get changed. I would almost think that this would be approved by this board, you know, your board.
Okay.
Their board with an appointment to the board.
The 2080, requiring 2080 is in the policy.
It does require.
It does require it from all non-Tama County, you know, services.
But it's not required in 422
Yep.
To, for this board, for your board.
Yep. That was something David, I mean, we talked from the very beginning that because they were getting tax dollars, that they needed to have an agreement with Tama County, that they were going to continue, they were going to, they were going to continue providing the service and getting the tax dollars. They had to have that 2080 agreement.
So in short, there were a lot of handshake agreements between previous fire chiefs and responding for, by conference. And they were never qualified. So we didn't know how far into Tama County Valplane was going to come.
Yeah.
And vice versa, and what, what parts of Tama County were just outside of recovery. Like Dicer covers what, half of Benton County?
Or 70 square miles of Benton County and they're not going to give us any tax dollars. So that's the kind of conflicts you get when you're not on the border with another county. And we discovered Valplane was covering a lot, a large area that wasn't really what had been Tama's area years and years ago. But there was a handshake done 20, 30 years ago and there was some contention. And that was one of the things that we spent a lot of time on that we finally said, look, you guys, this has to be settled before anybody goes to anybody. And now they've had a meeting and that has been solved. That extra, those extra areas is going back to Tama. And, and that's why we require that there has to be some kind of documentation. That these aren't just, you know, somebody's fire chief had a handshake with somebody else's.
Has Benton and you said who's the other one? Well, I guess probably Grundy. They probably helped collaborate. Have they passed this measure?
Marshall County, Marshall County is in the, in the process of trying to get it done this year. Benton County, Benton County passed it in 2023.
Okay.
Their goal is in 10 years, they will have no entities come into Benton County at all. So that's why they're.
Yep. I'm just thinking like if everybody's passed it, then hopefully they're all like you said, working together to, hey, it's all passed, let's make sure the money's getting to the right places. Not always.
It's interesting how money can change agreements, you know. You know, Dicer, we literally sit on Highway 21, so the middle of the road is Benton County on the other side and.
It's pretty tough for Benton County to have every, no entities come in with that situation.
Especially since they only have a first responder unit on the, on the western side of their county. First, you know, the next unit in is, is in Benton.
We're thinking about the citizens. Think about the citizens.
Right, exactly. But I just wanted to make sure we were being, because we don't want to disrupt service to citizens. And we don't, we're not going to collect enough. Our tax base isn't high enough. They're getting 1.0, almost 1.3 million dollars this year. They're going to get more of that next year. We're not even going to. We can't afford to put another service somewhere to cover the areas these other services are covering. So our thought was we treat them the same way as everybody else and we don't disrupt the services that have been provided to citizens all the years.
911 Jacob said Dicer should annex into Benton County and build an EMS garage.
That suggestion's been made. You should build a garage on the other side of Highway 21. I didn't see the state book getting told then. So the 2080 agreements are why we're working on them. I guess that is something I didn't know of. They should, they can just do their 2080 agreements and then send it to you guys for signature if you wanted to do one standard agreement coming from you guys. I've had two send theirs to me and they're just pretty standard. It just says, basically, we want an agreement to continue servicing our service area into Benton, or into Tama County. They're very basic.
Well, they usually work as you have. The board, you know, like whoever's appointed to that board, they'll approve, you know, like a copy. And then it goes to all the individual governing bodies to approve it. It's.
Well, on, on the sample I gave them, I think I had put everybody, all of the outline I put on the top of it for them. The one that came back to me from, I think it was Montour, they had just put their own on, their own name on there. Cause I think they wanted, well, Montour's special, but they just wanted their own name on it. They didn't want everybody else on there. So you could end up with nine different 2080, or nine different pieces of paper, but they're all going to say the same. Or we could require them all to sign the same one. It doesn't matter.
Yeah. Usually what you're agreeing to is just the language has to be all the same and approved by all the individual board because like if David is the appointee, he's got a decision-making car on that board, but for us to, as a county to agree with everything, our full board has to agree with it and same with all of the city councils. That's, that's.
Okay, so we can tweak that one that I wrote, because Montour didn't change it that much. I can tweak the one that I wrote, which actually we're kind of in a dispute. We're kind of us and Hiwata and somebody else are kind of in a dispute with Benton County with their 2080 agreement. And I got a lot of suggestions from the county, their city attorneys. I can probably tweak that, the one they did a lot based off the advice I got from them. And I can have all of us approve that one. And then just have everybody do that one. And then have their councils approve that one, if that's what you'd like to do.
Yeah.
Do you guys want to approve that before they sign it or just?
If, if the board would sign it, I mean, agree to whatever the terms are that go to our board or final approval or whatever and then.
Before they sign it?
Yeah, the more partners you have, the more changes everybody wants.
Yeah, I know, believe me, I know, yeah.
So whatever the final document is, it's something that you think that everybody could live with, within that committee. And then, you know, then I can say David wouldn't be able to explain, you know, why it's this way.
So we would approve it and then let the cities work at it and they can do what they want and then it comes to you for final?
Yeah, each, each of the entities, like we wouldn't have any other, I mean, we have more voting power than. So everybody just had to agree on the same thing. Then it would be filed with the state of the state.
Yeah, I mean, Montour's already, I mean, what they said, they, they basically said we'll agree to anything. I, I really think that that's how most of them are going to be because it's really very basic. They just don't want to disrupt what we're doing now. And honestly, I've had two, I've had a lot of phone calls this week, but two of them have been about possibly changing to first responder units and transport services. Because they aren't, they don't have the call volume to maintain their ambulances. So yeah, you know, those would be the only changes that might come forward. But those are also things we need to look at when we're looking at the structure of EMS in Tama County and how fiscally responsible it's going to be for everybody. Because this money is not, one of our, one of our struggles has been to really try to explain to some of these services, this money is to help you where you've had a deficit. It's not to replace your current budgets. Because it's not enough money. And that's kind of been a struggle, hasn't it, David? You know, some of them have thought, well, I can go out and buy an ambulance and we can hire people and we can now run our ambulance service and they're only going to get $40,000 a year. And that's not enough money to do that.
But I think for, for your, the charter, we can approve it and then your board can approve it. Just as this.
Actually, our board is approving.
I'll make that motion, approve the Tama County Essential Service Advisory Council operating charter.
Oh, second, it's been moved in the second or third discussion. All those in favor say aye. Would you care?
Thank you.
Discussion of us will actually appoint a primary and alternate representative to the Divertment and Ambulance Service Board. Currently on, I'm the primary. I don't think we appointed an alternate last January. And so I think Jacob's February somewhere, there has to be an alternate specified. I'm going to say.
David.
Yeah, go ahead, Jacob.
Just, just so you guys are aware, an alternate doesn't necessarily have to be appointed, but just for the times that maybe the primary representative couldn't attend, it'd be nice to just have a secondary to ensure we have a quorum. We've had some issues with a quorum at our last meeting and we want to try to make sure we have better attendance.
We'll do, we'll do this January the 2nd, which is a Friday, right?
Yeah, but then Jacob just wanted to know ahead of time.
I can do it.
All right, we'll make a motion to designate alternate for the Ambulance Service Board. Okay. All second. You're already on, right? So that's weird. Right, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Would you care? You got it, Jacob. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
I actually seen it come through last week and I thought about it again. I feel that everybody else has a pretty good load on what they're doing, so.
All right. Discussion of possible action on contract, we're bringing six comprehensive land use plans. Here's contract sent down. Marty and I think it outlines the terms that we have agreed to. At the beginning, I think there was a request to have the whole full amount deposited and then they would work backwards off a retainer. And negotiated that we would do a fee for services. They're working, they would turn it on hours and then we would get paid. One, one of the issues come up against, these are very expensive at other places and so we got a good deal here. However, somebody on, well, Joe Bowe on the zoning commission contacted Dean Fisher and asked why the, why was the change there to require the more expensive comprehensive land use plans? And so each city and each county, they cost about $160,000 to, I don't know, I've heard $180,000 to do and they have to be updated. It's a living cost. And then they're supposed to be fine now for about 20 years. But they change over about four or five years, you know, it's, they need to be updated. And so they're, they're very expensive. So every, it's like city of Tama had to have one then. I'm sure the city, so like all of the incorporated areas as well as the counties, that's a lot of money.
Yeah, that, that money just for the update? To update one or two?
Update from, to fit their new requirements. And new is 15 years ago. They put these requirements in 15 years ago. And so you have to get nine different domains. You have to address nine different. And so you have to hit nine different domains, you have to address nine different domains.
Maybe at the 12, if they all apply to you.
And you have to have smart planning with those, which, that's what makes it expensive. And you have to get community input, and there's a lot of meetings that have to take place. And so that was the requirement 15 years ago. There are many cities and counties that are compliant. And so I have a hard time spending any money towards something that I would rather just tell the state, get rid of the requirements. I agree that we, I think that we have a land use plan. The one that we have isn't compliant with, they need to change the state code, or they can fund our study. I've talked to our state representative about it, and he's on board with it, he understands. And he's going to try to read, get language that repeals that one, that requires the smart planning, the 12 different domains. And so that's what he's going to work on this session, and try to get that repealed. But I have a hard time spending any money towards a comprehensive land use plan. We have one, our zoning board just spent a bunch of time writing new regs for it, and make sure it's updated, just because it isn't compliant with what the state is required. I don't, I don't believe that it's worth it. I think that we should wait until after we see what the legislature, they try to enforce it, what's the important?
I was going to ask a question. Is it enforceable? Right. If that many people in counties have not done it, then it's a useless law, in the least of the way.
I think the main issue is, you know, we have a solar and we have a wind ordinance coming. If those get approved, they can be challenged. I mean, that's, you Google it, it's out there. You know, our region six and inter-count are saying the same thing. So, but I don't disagree with Mark's point on the unfunded mandate. I mean, nobody wants to spend the money. Ours is 15,000, which is better than that 100,000, but it's still money we could use for other things. So my thought is maybe zoning's already working on it. Just let them continue to work on it and do, you know, because they're not really spending money unless they're sending, I mean, if they put something in the newspaper, that would be about the only thing. Maybe we wait with a per region six till we see how the session goes, but let them continue to work on that as well as the wind ordinance. I know that doesn't cost us any money.
And we've already, we've already got other issues out that will be addressed. We address, we have addressed just the batteries.
Battery and...
Yeah, it's just anything that's not regulated in the county.
Right.
Or at the state level.
I just want to make sure we're still being, working towards being compliant. So if they get through session and it doesn't, I mean, obviously, we'd change region six timeline probably, but I don't want to just sit and do nothing. I think if we can do it for free with our zoning commission, that's my opinion. If we feel good that Dean and others can get this done at the state. Because ultimately, I mean, we're kind of going to be working on the vision and the strategy and the survey. The survey might be good anyway, because we're working on economic development to bolster that. And so I think it's never a bad idea to know, what do the people here care most about? Do they care about, you know, having walking trails? Do they care about, you know, having this or that, you know, restaurants? Like, what do people want in our county? I think that's never a bad idea in kind of those trends. But I'm okay with, like I said, just kind of let Marty know, can we kind of hold tight for a bit? But let zoning, you know, I guess the directive could be for them to continue working on it.
So the survey you're talking about, it'll be two different surveys. The one six would do, and the one we're looking at through the economic side of the house, right? It'll be two separate surveys, and that would cost twice, I mean, why would we pay twice for the same?
Are we doing the survey on the economic side of them?
Isn't that part of it? It's all together. We're not, I mean, nothing today. Nothing that we have planned. But it, the economic development part is part of the plan.
Yeah, it's just part of, you know, they're going to look at, the person that's put in there with Marshall Town Chamber Commerce, they're going to look at, you know, where does Tame County need to go, start building those relationships? What does our county look like, you know, so?
My biggest concern is that it takes so long to get them done anyway. But under number three, or I'm sorry, number four, says, Tame County knowledge future uncertainty about region six resource partner projects. There have been disasters, floods, tornadoes, drought, economic pandemic. Where we get a surplus land with grant related work. This should happen, and a project like this would need to be placed on hold for a while, unless we find other skilled staff members, hopefully, over the next year or so. But if nothing happens, we have a small planning staff, and only two of us work in this comprehensive planning area. And so we get started on a project, and the Rachel comes through, or COVID-19, or whatever. And we're out two, you know, three years. And I think that it's worth pushing off at least till after the legislative session. We could revisit it at that time. I just don't see putting any money towards it at this point.
And it'd be good to know. I know property tax relief is the number one thing on Reynolds List here before she exits. It'd be nice to understand what is that involved, and is this, is this an option that's come up? I know she's come out of several counties, but maybe Dean can escalate it ours.
That's what Dean's plan would be, is just calculate all, everybody who's out of the lands and say, this is how much it costs.
Yeah, it'd be nice to show them.
Where does that come from? Property tax papers. And so, I mean, that would be...
And the benefit, you know, if you do this, does it bring people, does it, is it worth the money to do it? You know, typically, does it actually advance us? We're, we are, is it just to check the box for 15,000 in our city to be 100 and some thousand, you know? Do we need a motion to, I guess, postpone this, but to allow zoning commission to continue working on it? I mean, we've already allowed them, I don't know, reallow them, but just let them...
I mean, if we're giving up things to make our intentions clear, and say that they're going to start working on it, I'll make a motion. They're just going to say we're going to wait till after the legislative session to bring this back. Let the zoning commission continue.
All second. Did you make the first motion?
Sure. That's what I heard.
And can you tell me that motion again, please?
Motion is to direct the zoning commission to continue to work on the Tame County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. And readdress this contract with region six after the legislative session.
And Hillmore seconded it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those in carries. Especially possible action on short and long-term disability plan, we skipped low from North East Partners.
Yep. So we need to call him. Do you want to call him from your phone, or do you want me to call him from my phone? And be on speakerphone for all of you guys? If you want, you can. We can help you.
Especially possible action to approve the tree of health gauge for our wellness screening dependent employees in the spouses. Health gauge, is this the same?
It's used in nothing, correct.
Yep, that's the stretch of screening. There's some options on there for annual screening.
Yes.
There it is. And all of these come with her?
Is it skipped on the phone?
Yep. Well, he hung up and let you call him back.
Oh, okay. We'll do that. Thank you.
Said he lost it or something.
It's okay.
All of these come?
What's that, Seddon?
All of these come through?
Yes, the highlighted is what they're looking to do for us.
I think it's like 185, but there's, can employees do these optional?
Not if we don't choose.
Okay. So everybody would just get this one package in yellow, they can't add anything.
And this would be only for people who are on the health plan, right?
Any employee.
Or yeah.
Yeah, employees possibly, I believe.
Yeah.
Do part-timers, part climbers too?
I don't remember. Paul on there for any chance?
No, I didn't see Paul get on today.
Sure, if it's part-time.
Okay, but anyone with an employee?
Right, and their spouse.
And their spouse, so would that qualify me?
Yes.
Yep.
You guys are considered full-time.
Yep.
But my only thought is the, which package we go with? The one that's highlighted, the beige, second from the back, or third from the back? So it's perio gauge, perio gauge, E plus bio gauge, non-vesting? That one, I mean, the major difference is the check your height, weight, waist circumference. And my, you're reporting another chemistry panel with glucose, A1C, you know, for diabetes and cholesterol. We should be doing those. I mean, we pay for preventative, and once a year screenings for that already. I give them, and so I don't know that we need to do those extra ones, but the other ones we don't. And so I think that that would be good. And then if people want that, then we can, this is, there's an option.
No, no, it's it, you buy that one package, and then if you want add-ons, you buy add-ons for the whole county. But each person can individually ask for those add-ons.
And they said that they'll advertise, though. Does that mean that anybody can run them, even if they're, like, not county paid?
No, they mean advertise to the county. So like, say, hey, your county's, your employer's doing this for you, you need to sign up.
I was trying to figure that out.
No, it's just for employees.
I mean, is there, that might be something through our insurance, when we call Skip here. Is there anything else in the additional options? To Mark's point, if we did the $125 top option, is there any of these that we're high for in our county? Like, you know, is there high colon cancer or prostate cancer, or, you know, is there anything? Because then, what, it's 125 right now, so there's, that's like 40 bucks we're freeing up. But I don't know, someone could ask him if there's anything else he thinks we should add on. Because that would be total, or would that be per person?
Per player, per person, per employee person.
Our health on that 125? Our health insurance covers all of them, because it's preventative, and there's no COVID, right? I think with the...
Right, if it's preventative, it's for the physical stuff.
These over here, but doesn't do all these things?
I think those are preventable, too.
That'd be the question we could ask.
And so, the other thing that doesn't usually get checked on an ordinary, this appears.
Yeah. As I say, to Mark's point, these are being paid for by our healthcare plan. But by doing this, does this encourage more people to actually get it done?
I believe so. I don't think people go on their own to do it.
And because of that, it keeps our healthcare costs down.
They've caught some major things with this.
That's my only concern, is if, you know, with many of the businesses, they, you know, no smoking, blah, 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 you know, a whole bunch of things. And because of that, it allowed them to lower their costs. So, yeah, just because it's part of our healthcare plan, doesn't mean that, you know, every time I go in, or every year, that all the stuff gets checked, because I...
A number of people don't even go in for their annual physical either.
Yeah.
Some of those things down below, like the blood tests, you know, chemistry panel, some of those can show, like, oh, you had this going on your heart, but oh, your blood pressure's high, and this is, you know, high. So it might correlate to where... Yeah, that's a tricky.
My book, I should move it, on Mondays. Carol.
That's a check.
Well, they haven't done it before, and it's complicated. I didn't know that they would...
I agree.
Unless you incentivize it somehow.
I think we have a very good show.
That's what, expecting 45.
And we haven't done, we skipped a year.
I think, I think we didn't.
We go it every two years, yeah.
So, and we'd be doing it, my sixth would be two years.
We pay for everybody that gets it, then everybody...
Everybody gets it done.
And what budgets is coming out of, like, that we normally take this from, probably on the resource, I guess?
Or what if it might?
I should like model health plan.
Yeah, I say that. I think it might come out of health plan.
That's what I would think.
This would be health. That would make sense.
What I guess we'll do?
Figure out.
Let's say a little bit.
Yeah, I look, yes. Motion. I'll make a motion that we do the 85 plan.
All second.
Okay, move the second. To approve gauge, health gauge. Approve agreement of the health gauge for wellness. Any employees in their spouses? Or per gauge, bio gauge, non-vesting.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Skip, this is Karen. How are you this morning?
Hey, glad, glad to hear. Maybe I'll line for a little bit, but...
No, yeah, all right, no problem. You are on speakerphone with the board.
Perfect. Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
I'm actually just, I've got a late call here, too, so, yeah, two friends on my side are better than one, so, I'm a baby zero. But anyway, I'm the zero side here, so, good to be here with you all, and kind of had somewhat of a, a bit of an expanded conversation last week, kind of understanding what you guys are looking to do on disability programs. So I stop all of that, and see where we can get, see what areas that you're looking for, and then focus on.
So, so the board, I believe, is thinking about going to PTO, and so that would get rid of our banked hours for sick. And they're thinking about maybe short-term, long-term disability plans to pick up that slack, I guess. Is that, is that correct, guys?
To replace, to keep what you have ready potentially, but replace going forward.
Session.
That's mine. May, uh, short-term disability, lazy, um, we got anybody to be compared to, I don't remember anybody, yeah, I consider the man scientist is here. If you have roughly one hundred and thirty?
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
I know.
First, so good, ten thousand, you're wrong. Yeah, would say that one. Nine dollars, you think, thirty, you do.
You said up to, uh, sixty percent on the short term, uh, was that only medical payments, or would you pay their salary that sixty percent? Well, I want to make sure, does he say?
Thirty, he said he said.
Yeah, the benefit was, uh, uh, to the end of the break for you, but.
Okay, I just want to make sure I was, I thought I heard something different, I want to make sure it was clear, thank you.
Fine, yeah, they, they might have gotten you a set business, you know, from the way you.
Have PTO to take for that first seven days? They just go. They just go without pay either.
Yep.
So if you got somebody who takes their comp time as, as, uh, we're trying to switch over to as they get it, and they have no bank, and they're without pay for that for seven days, seven, seven days, seven business days?
We also allow.
Yeah, that's my example, you can do it, they'll go down.
We also allow employees to donate the time to other employees if they. They, they're not allowed to donate sick, they have to donate vacations, so it's still the PTO.
They're doing this.
I could pull you out right away with stroke.
Paul has brought up in the handbook and.
And our new auditors.
Yeah.
Go ahead and show.
The, there's an untended liability on the sick hold, or the sick, sick leave because of the larger, uh, bank we allow.
What's the liability?
It, the fact that if people started using up all that sick leave, cause we don't, we don't budget for it, there's no budget for it. And so PTO allows the employees also more flexibility with their leave time, it can be used for anything. And our new outside auditors, there's a new, um, reporting requirement that just started this year in tracking your leaves. Um, and the outside auditors said, uh, PTO would be highly recommended by them because it would make this much easier for tracking purposes for this new GASP one oh one that the government's requiring us to report on. All leave, uh, we, any used, any leaves, we have to track, uh, any used, lost, gained, and so it's a whole.
I was just reading up on, you know, stuff, whatever, and it's got, yeah, I would have thought.
Yep.
Cause we only have four or five people that ever get, now, we only have like, I, eight hundred right now.
Now we have like nine.
Why? Big, big situation, why are we changing, you know?
There's also a lot of abuse of the sick leave when people leave.
Leave?
Leave or, leave or are here.
Yeah.
It's, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of abuse.
The good ones that don't use sick leave, you know, so then they get less time off, and if it's PTO, they can take it for whatever they want if they're sick, if they're not.
If you have eight hundred hours and you retire, what do you get?
You get paid.
No, your sick leave, you do not get paid.
You get paid out if you were a sick leave.
No.
So that's not very.
Well, that's telling you to use it right there.
Yeah, that's it.
So that's why you get to keep the sick leave, if that's what we decide to do, they keep whatever's paid, then they get paid out.
No, that's where sick hold came in, they started the sick hold to stop the payout, they used to pay it out years and years ago, I understand, before I worked here. But then they stopped the payout and gave them that sick hold if you're at eight hundred. But that's a nightmare in its own, that's a whole different discussion. But, um, there's, there's just a lot of abuse, like say, it's the good ones that are building it up. Uh, to an extent, I mean, you also have your ones that just have other medical reasons that they're using theirs, but there's a lot of abuse in the sick leave. There really is.
I know.
And, and then just like that, the, the flexibility for the employee by making it PTO, you don't have to worry about it sick. If you want to take day off, you can take day off, you don't, it doesn't have to be, oh, that's sick leave, I can only use it if I'm sick, you can use it for anything.
Last two companies I was at, went over the PTO.
Right.
And it helped. It's in this last, it helped from the supervisor point of view because director, I had people calling sick when we're lazy, because they felt that if I don't use the sick leave, I'm losing out on those days that I, I have, sort of like you said, the good people didn't do it, they got a piece of paper every year, or never having called in sick for all year. That piece of paper meant really, there's a pat on the back, but it didn't.
Yeah. Yeah.
And short-term disability is a great thing because every, you know, in your, everyone's life, whether it's a baby, whether it's a surgery, whether it's, you know, spouse, like, there's going to be something that comes up. Instead of borrowing other people's sick time to be able to have it given to you, you know, we can come across it.
It's something that we could budget for, private, short-term disability is something you can budget for. By budgeting for it, the, the cost, um, I guess at the highest level that he gave us, for example, is Paul's, another hundred eighty-something thousand, and it saved us by now. He probably sick beds we did this, every year. And so if it costs us some, you know, to make sure we have a really good plan, then we can do that, as long as it's budgeted for.
So yes, Skip, I think it'd be good just to get a quote on both the different options, the short term and the long term too, and we still need to figure out as a board how we would go about, you know, paid for both, paying for one, depends, you know, we just got to get the numbers and.
I think what Skip basically needs to get you those numbers is what's, what's your waiting period, how many days do you want to wait for?
Question. I, I'd like to see a, a quote from both for zero seven, was it zero seven, was that an option, zero, and then zero zero? Is also, uh, you, Michelle brought up a good point, what if you have a heart attack or a stroke, you weren't really planning for that? Congratulations, you get to wait eight days before you get paid again, and my rent doesn't do it, you know?
Yeah, that's sound.
I, I want to make sure we have premium coverage, but, so if it's a really high, you know, high cost for that, we, I, I wanted to be able to at least have a educated discussion on, yeah.
Great.
Yep, we call, we call it, uh, zero seven is like, um, you know, that's the gold standard, so it'd be, that's at the bottom, zero zero, you got to see how you order that.
It goes on the W two, so then every employee that gets that benefit is being taxed on it, correct?
Did you hear, Michelle?
Yeah.
No, I'm sorry, maybe you couldn't hear me, Skip, this is Michelle, so if it goes on the W two, that'd be for all employees that get the benefit of having the disability insurance, so everybody would be taxed at it on their annual, and not if they used it, is that correct? The disability insurance, so everybody would be taxed at it on their annual and not if they used it. Is that correct?
About the county. I think let's quote it both ways, right? I think that's a lot of counties do quote it both ways and. We'll see what it looks like. I'm a numbers person. I just want to see it both ways and.
Yep. I thi- I think we see it both ways, but um. What's the standard from what I understand? I mean, other employers I've been, they cover the first one and then the employee can opt into the second one for the longer term. I thought that if you can be recorded both ways, that would be, yeah.
And the other thing is it'd be a good part of us for Jack with the toll, the beat as we can.
Would you want to go into place?
Oh, July one.
Well, they were talking January one for PTO.
January twenty. January first, I think that's when we're trying to switch over to PTO, that's what we're. And it it wouldn't be all, it wouldn't be all employees because uh the union has to negotiate their benefits and so you would, it would be all non-union.
It would be in the absence just to do everybody at the same time.
Well, that's a negotiating. So I don't think that we're going to include anybody.
So just with doing the social pay coverage, everybody has to be covered.
Yeah.
Well, that's.
All of those are, I mean, they they don't have to negotiate. Yeah, they can agree to.
Still do. I don't know what the percentage would even be.
We have to pay it for.
We did pay for it.
Oh, we'll use it maybe.
Then when the longer kicks in, when does the long longer kick in? As a member.
You might have the receiver hanging.
You give me his number.
Um. My minute things, it's right there at the top of.
The minute. When the minute, oh.
Yes.
I need to call him about another.
Yeah, his number's right there before his little.
I don't think so. I think we gave him straight the other he comes back. With the numbers.
Workers to add discussion.
Um, discussion and for things. Okay, for claims this week is four zero six comma one seven five period eight seven. And the majority of that is a two hundred and fifty dollar, two hundred thousand, excuse me, that was for the nine one one general supplement, which is a normal payment.
Poorly, correct.
Poorly, so.
Thanks for putting that. That's good, Dan.
I figured, I figured you'd question, so I thought I might just go get it out there right there.
Yep.
So I make a motion, we approve that amount, four about four hundred six thousand one hundred seventy five dollars and eighty seven cents. It's been moved in second and discussion. All those are figures I got. I. Motion. Here. Public comments. Rules of the commons, new business. Um, supervisory reports, anybody got anything new? Endition, the last meeting. I've got my job, it's for the.
Okay.
One five for now.
Are you with IPB as well? Perfect. So we got her guy in the back. Thank you for running with us.
We're agreeing.
Okay, so uh when you guys may be the official interim IT director. Uh one of the requirements was to report what money is being spent. So. Just to give you an extra parent, but thank you, Karen, for giving me all this information. This last, last claim period uh was nine thousand seven hundred four dollars and thirty cents. Um, we, and I already reported, we bought new desktop computers because of uh. The uh what Windows eleven update, we only bought four. Um, we bought the wall wards uh for the new phone system. Uh that was eight hundred dollars a second purchase. The first purchase was a hundred seventy four ninety nine. Uh that's. Basically, by going that route, we said you're probably around thirty thousand dollars. Um, and keeping our current equipment. And then um. Uh I authorized the the nine one one monitor. They paid for the first two out of their budget. I went and looked at it and I said, look, I'll pay for the second set because they didn't have enough to that. Paid for it. Basically, those monitors cleared their desks off. So they could, they could actually keep everything on the screen. And I I did mention to them, I used to use grease pencils when I was dispatching, so it's, it's very well worth it. We have another bill that came in, which will be for the fifteenth of the month.
Yep.
Uh for all of the stuff that um CSS has done for the transition to the ARIAM. Um. So it's trans. So I'm gonna subtract against this.
This must be a big number because it's his face.
No, no, it's.
It's not big yet.
No.
Totally uh for for this current amount, the addition is fourteen thousand six hundred and ninety five dollars and thirty cents. There was. An awful lot of work that CSS had to do. Moving equipment around, plugs around and software changes. Typically, they build the sheriff, which I would have loved to kept it in his budget. But it's actually ours to pay. So that's, this is coming out of um the ARPA fund, so. The remaining money after that transaction, which is after the fifteenth. Will have two hundred nine thousand, two hundred thirty dollars and ninety cents left in the ARPA budget for IT. So we have money there and no, I don't want anybody thinking they're going to spend it. Okay, it's going to be. Taking care of the major upgrades that are coming down the pike for our county. Um. So that's what I have for that. And then Mark had mentioned to me that I should probably go out and start advertising for um. A person to do IT, not as that, not at the director level, but as the worker below at a high, high level. And I talked to James about that in the Marshall town. So he's given me some hints, but yeah, we'll, I'll get with Paul and James and draft up the. The. The the person needed. We can solicit those and then interview them.
That we budgeted for is not a new position.
Right.
If the money's already there, we've gone without it for long enough, David's taken on the lead on. A lot of this uh getting to where we can actually can't have somebody who might come in and do the day to day steps. Appreciate that, but this stuff is going to be limited as as well on other strips.
I have a real quick update on the phones. Um, Wednesday, we're putting the phones in at uh public health. And then the sixteenth. Of December, we're putting the phones in this building. And then uh I need to do some more work with the uh attorneys and the clerk of court because we're going to do that building next. And the last will be the sheriffs. And nine one one, we got it. There's, that one probably won't happen until January because the nine one one is tied to. I don't remember, I don't know if Jacob's still on, but there's a, there's a statewide functionality that has to be melded into it. And they can't do anything until January timeframe. So we're, we're moving forward with it. Um. There's been little pickups, but we're going to just fix as it goes, so. Anybody else got anything?
I could drink.
Uh, that you know. Do we have a? I don't know if there's a.
You don't, you don't have a slate.
I emailed you the presentation, going to go up on last group.
Can you, do you get your email in here by any chance?
Uh.
Supervisor email, sorry.
I don't think that accepts incoming, does it?
Or is it not? I could.
Do you have another uh uh plugs?
I do have an HDMI case. We have.
Have a, oh, we can too.
Oh, wonderful.
I bring it just in case, because I never know.
Basically, he can plug in.
His computer.
His computer to that. If the problem is that's going to cut out.
Right.
Well, you guys won't be able to see that, but I mean, the other people still be on as if he just needs the HDMI.
Not very long.
Yeah, it's not very long at all.
You have to put your computer over there.
I don't know. Do you have a?
I have the.
Do you have a connector?
I don't know.
I wish I, I wish I'd thought to uh.
Yeah, work's too short.
The printout slides that we brought for.
Yeah.
Just didn't occur to me this morning when I was driving here.
Put a chair there and you could sit it on.
It'd be training and then that's it.
That's it.
Although uh my favorite note from today was Dale Palm makes film a job.
A little warm. He must have been, that must have been Ganski in his song, so I wasn't ready for it.
They fit.
Yeah.
Is it just something that you can play on or is it just?
Yeah, I need to actually hold on. Let me, let me finish setting up.
Okay.
If it was emailed to David or you probably even print that out and depending on the page, if you get the layout of a little slide.
Oh, you're fine.
What, whatever you get. Yep.
Bye, Mike.
I'm an HDMI, HDMI.
I wish I was having a great week.
Oh, you're staying. We're gonna have another public comment period. Oh, so what? Another shoulder on there. They're getting this in.
I'm gonna pay a week.
Here, you don't have to have a HDMI, HDMI.
I mean, you can go look in and Rick's. Or if you're more than often.
I mean, if not, that's fine. I just, whatever works best for you.
Well, we think this should, this should be fine. I mean, you guys don't pay attention to who's logged on anyway. So maybe David, he he seems to like to have that up there, but. I mean, that's all you're.
Right there, I paid attention.
Yeah.
I feel rude to be like.
Well, that's just it. Being behind you guys, it's a little.
Now I picked up this city to fly.
I think, I think if you plug in here, it should be fine. And I don't know if we can set it here. I can either control it for you if you need anything controlled or.
Whatever works best. I'm not going to be. More I do these, the more I see there's just completely different setup as well where I go, so.
Yeah, we're just getting technical here. We're not real on top of the technology yet, so.
We had one was just uh, just a conference room, it was sort of, no sort of electronics. It was uh.
Well, this, this is just this year that we got a TV and a laptop.
We had a presentation here back in October last year, so I don't think that was set up.
No, it was not.
No.
You got enough. Thank you. Good question.
Take a turn, right?
I know, I probably should be.
Would you like a call?
If it works.
You gotta give me your honest opinion though. What do you think?
Good. I think if that cherry wins, it's basically my wife won't make sure, so.
Or maybe like this is taking next.
Hmm, it's good.
It's still good though.
It's like mine.
I can use in that.
All we're getting ready. Do y'all know a good cafe in the area for lunch? I I I looked on Google Maps. I figured I'd ask.
What kind of food do you want?
Yeah, just breakfast food.
Those Spankies.
I saw Miss Spanky's. I was like.
Yep, the Zewarka, that's the best.
Okay.
Just ignore the smell of it, it's good. I ate there yesterday.
I'm I'm doing my uh tourism here, so I've got, I've got a Miss Spanky apparently, and then I've got a the famous staircase in Traer. So. I'm excited. Wait, it's Friday, yeah.
Also, mail a letter to Santa at the, at the Yonine staircase right now too. So you might want to write a letter, okay? You'll get a letter back.
Guess I'll do it the other way.
The Yonine Santa is a trick.
Yeah.
They have the many letters.
The stoplight too, this.
God, this stuff. Don't go, don't fire up here.
Well, no one likes him, Karen. You make him, I'll take him.
Thanks.
And uh just out of curiosity, for the purposes of that new mandatory training laws, anybody newly elected or born?
We have four new. And he was held over from the last, but all four of us were newly elected in January. So we've been, we wish uh.
Okay, so you're you're covered though for the purposes of the certificate.
Correct.
Awesome. I don't have to worry about that. And I've been trying to do, if we have these uh total resolution trains, I'm trying to mix. For us, just in case.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Well, this is slightly different format. I don't mind at all if you turn that way. Um, I will. Try my best to keep this a reasonable time because I know that it is a cold Monday morning. Uh. But so we'll look behind the scenes. This is our second oldest active case at the moment, so. Fun fact there. All right. And just so you know, I'll take questions at any time during the presentation if you have those questions. Um, if you're next, get uncomfortable, more than on the screen. I think I do a good enough job with my voice, but I'll try my best again to keep it a reasonable time. Um, little disclaimer, right better that you saw at the beginning was this is not intended to be legal advice. Well, we are going to be talking about the laws. Uh, if you run into these situations in your day to day, maybe different. And again, given that none of you are new, I am going to go a little faster through some of these sections. All right, open meetings one on one. Uh, so just the way that IPID handles cases, I will take the full time on this slide. We have this direction from legislature that says ambiguity in the construction application of this chapter should be resolved in favor of openness. So uh whenever there is a gray area or ambiguity within the construction of chapter twenty one, we're looking at the intention of open meetings laws, the intention of the legislature is to have meetings open to the public, um have transparency to the government's decisions. A little roadmap, we're going to be talking about what is a governmental body, who's uh, what it means to hold a meeting, what the legal performance are, what a session is. But again, I'm going to be trying to give the preview or anything to move us within it. Uh governmental body, just a brief coverage. Uh, it has all the different types on the screen. Most of the ones are the obvious types. It's the state agencies, the boards of directors of those, whether it's commission of board, something along those lines, various different uh agencies created by either executive order or by state um statute. It also covers all the local bodies, so library boards, board of supervisors, of course, for counties, city councils, uh township trustees, all the way down to drainage districts, fire districts. Uh, two types of nonprofits related gambling and paramutual wagering, but for the most part, it's the ones that you expect. Plus twenty eighty agreements, if you have those joint exercises, and I heard you talking about that earlier. So if you have a board that is composed of that, then those twenty eighty agreements, the um at least the voting boards at the top are considered governmental bodies under chapter twenty one as well. And I will send this PowerPoint to you if you don't have it already because I know that's tiny print. It's available on our website, but I'll make it available to you. Just whatever's a good email to send, I'll make sure that this is available so you can reference that because I know that's tiny. In terms of best practices, uh there are some gray areas, as I said, within the law. Part of what we look at twenty one point one is of course that construction in favor of openness. But if you fall into that gray area, we always advise this is the best practice, not necessarily mandatory, but the best practice is to assume on the side of transparency and that gives the public some buy-in. But for holding a meeting, again, this is something I'm sure y'all are familiar with. But there are four elements that we look at within the law. Uh, there's a formal or informal gathering of members of a governmental body. There's participation with a majority of members, so three out of five. Uh, five out of seven, so on. Four out of seven, terrible math. Uh, four out of seven, five out of nine, so on. Uh deliberation or action, meaning action, vote deliberation, meaning that there is uh sharing of opinion, reasoning behind those opinions. And then there is something within the public policymaking purposes of the government. Uh, best practice, though, is whatever gathering is called, if there is deliberation or action about any matter, it's going to involve some duties. Uh, it doesn't matter if you call it a work session, doesn't matter if you call it a weekend getaway, doesn't matter if you call it an electronic session. In any case, um it is still considered a meeting if it meets all four of those elements. Uh deliberation. So deliberation is something where we are looking at, is there an opinion deal share? I think we should, I feel this good, this phrases to the bottom, I would support this or I wouldn't support this, my opinion on this matter is so on and so forth. Um, if there is that deliberation between council members or between members of any voting board, then there is at least potentially meeting if there's other elements are met. Of course, if there's not a mandatory, if they're not talking about policy making, if they're not a governmental body in first place, then there is no problem. Uh, but actually, if we go back just.
How do you go back? Backspace.
Uh. But there is that ability to receive information without substituting a meeting. So back here, I just did that.
Just back here?
Yeah. So informational, uh oftentimes, of course, we'll refer to this as purely ministerial. So they use the term somewhat interchangeable, but the idea is that there's no deliberation. Uh, you can receive information. This is what allows for um a chair or a court or secretary to send out an informational packet. So we have that board meeting packet. Uh, that's you receiving information, you're being briefed on things, you can even ask clarifying questions. It's just a matter of whether you're sharing those opinions amongst each other, but theoretically, and this is actually a larger uh board of supervisors. It's only long, we see, which is three people. But if you have that three person board of supervisors, the chair of that board could still send something out and says, here, we're going to be working on this contract with you. Because you're only sharing information, you're not saying, here's what I think about this contract. You would be in this clear for deliberation. Now, I think.
Now we went backwards.
Other direction. Uh, for social, social and ministerial. So these are the exceptions to policymaking. You can get together socially or a board uh does this from time to time. There should have like a little Christmas thing that we're going to do as an agency. Uh, and the idea is you can discuss anything socially, you can discuss football game, you can discuss local, local weather. You can talk about what your favorite cafe is, whatever. All of that is fine as long as you're not discussing business. So socialism, nuclear and then uh ministerial on the next line. We also recognize that there are purely ministerial ones. So if there's no discretion or judgment. Uh, so you're signing documents after you've already agreed to it. Let's say everybody needs to get together because we forgot to sign something. You sign off on that and that's considered a purely ministerial purpose because you've, you've already made this. Same idea in that middle of the second paragraph. Um, I think we also interpret this to include a limited range of governmental tasks that are unrelated to policymaking authorities. So coordinating availability for intermeetings. Uh, the idea for policymaking business is this does include things like sending uh sending compensation for employees that's within the discretion that you can grant it as members of a governmental body. But it doesn't include something like choosing a venue for a meeting. Let's say this building got shut down for maintenance for a few weeks. If you had to choose another place somewhere over in the county, you could have that discussion over email and coordinate it because that's not the discretion that you've been granted to act officially as a government. That's just formulation of, you know, what time are you available, when? Take the next slide. Again, our best practice, we uh recommend this, this is not strictly required, but I don't want you to misinterpret. If you are going to be attending something together or you may not want to be meeting, it, we recommend as best practice just to avoid public concern. But some notice for that, that's not the same notice that's required for meetings. You don't need to say, well, we're going to be together for this specific event. But if you know that you're going to be seen in public outside of a meeting, it's good practice to uh to avoid public concerns and just let them know in advance, yes, we're going to be there together. Um, and then again, if members are together in a majority, make sure the conversation topics are social to avoid uh bringing up government business. For emails and texts, uh this is something that we've been dealing with a little more often, something that we have been covering every time we have one of these uh meetings with folks. Is that email and texts, I think most people are under the understanding that you can still have a meeting over email or text. If you were to uh, you know, everybody is together on the same email thread, sharing opinions about um some upcoming ordinance, some uh you know, annual budget, the monthly budget. Those could be, if they are deliberation, if they're related to policymaking duties, and you're not just sharing information, then that could be considered a meeting, those four elements. What we have been trying to emphasize with people is this also includes things like if there's a, you know, local newspaper publishes something on Facebook and you're all commenting under that. We had a case with that recently where it's, everybody's commenting, you know, you got this wrong and then somebody else in council, because it's a contentious issue. They say, well, I mean, it's actually this, and that kind of amounts to deliberation. The other thing that we've seen recently is uh Google Docs. If you have some sort of online file sharing platform where everybody's editing the same document together. If you're leaving comments or if you're leaving uh proposed changes, let's say, let's, let's increase this number to this. If everybody's on that document together, that can also be considered deliberation. And then at the bottom for best practice, we always say if you're going to be sending out information related to government business, uh using that BCC function helps to avoid a situation where you're accidentally having a meeting because you're using uh that reply all. BCC is the blind carbon copy. It means that only the person who sent it out is going to be getting it back. Good way to implement. For legal requirements, this is the part that I'll run through a little faster, although you are welcome to ask questions at any time. Obviously, meetings need to be preceded by public notice at least twenty four hours in advance. Some governmental bodies, in fact, many of them at the local level have additional requirements, person of the types of appearance, you know, announcements related to elections. I'm sure that you're aware of this, but at least as far as chapter twenty one is concerned, uh there's a physical notice posted at least twenty four hours, prominent place accessible to the public, um which is either the primary office, that would be this location, or uh if there is no primary office, something like courthouse or city hall, then it would be the place, uh the location where the meeting will be at, which is also this place. Um, notice of meeting also needs to be sent to any news organization which are firmly requested. So, you know, we, we don't really discriminate between different types of news organizations. It's just if one requests it, we make it available. In fact, for IPID, we have an email list of anybody who asks us, not just news organizations, but at least as far as chapter twenty one is concerned, that's what it needs to. Uh, for agendas, which is the next line. So in addition to the date, time and place of meeting, the notice also needs to include an agenda. Um, now this agenda uh is all of the items that you intend to cover or might cover during the meeting because you can only talk about matters which are on the agenda. I saw your agenda, it's great, so no real concerns about that, but uh minimal agendas obviously would suffice ultimate this new business. Uh, that does not cover for the public what's actually going to be discussed, but something along the lines of um discussion, possible action, exactly what we have, discussion, possible action on possible twenty eighty agreement with, you know.
City of Newton.
Yes. And I was, I was interested, the uh discussion of the boundary line between here and Benton. I don't often get to attend these meetings, um aside from my own agency's meetings. So it was nice to have that, even if it wasn't necessarily what I was expecting, but I was grateful. Um, I genuinely, genuinely, it was good, it was good for me to see, um because I, I, I don't necessarily get to see them unless there's something where something's gone wrong and then they say, oh, can you remove this portion of this? Not really great. It's nice to see a well functioning uh meeting. With that said, um tentative agenda.
I didn't mean to do that.
No worries at all. Um, emergencies are the exception to the agenda notice. Otherwise, you aren't able to discuss something, even if it's raised by the public, you can receive information, but you can't deliberate on something that isn't on the agenda unless it's an emergency. With emergencies, what we're looking at is health, safety, significant financial loss, property loss, something that interferes with the government body's duties. Obviously, if there's a tornado that comes through and you need to uh coordinate relief efforts, that is something that qualifies as an emergency. But a less, you know, drastic option would be, let's say it's Wednesday evening. Uh, the school board receives notice that the heating system at the local middle school has gone out. It's the middle of winter, it's gonna be cold. This uh building won't open the next day unless they hire somebody from the budget to go in and do some maintenance. And they, for whatever reason, you know, this isn't a delegated task, they need to approve it the last minute to make sure that the building is open tomorrow. Of course, this isn't going to be permanent financial loss or property loss, but it would interfere with the ability to host classes for students. And so this would also be. Uh, for minutes on the next line. Minutes are uh just a counterpoint to agendas, date, time, place of the meeting, the members present, any action taken at the meeting, and at least enough information on each action to say how each member voted. Uh, again, there are additional publication requirements that exist outside of chapter twenty one. Twenty one is only the baseline for what all governmental bodies have to be, but uh well, there is nothing in chapter twenty one that requires publication. I'm aware that cities and counties have, there are requirements for that. I'm ready for the next slide. Uh, for electronic access, uh you seem to have that as well, I see for Zoom. Technically speaking, what the law requires is only electronic, or it only requires electronic access for the members. Uh, it's always good to have it for the public. Certainly, IPID does this. Most of the state agencies that I'm aware of do this. And I've heard that the legislature is considering options to make this mandatory for the public as well. Uh, but at least right now, that access is only mandatory to ensure that a member of the governmental body has the ability to attend remote meetings. Something like the speaker that uh the gentleman called in on earlier. Marvel. That's somebody else. Jacob. Took me two guesses. Uh, you're, you're Mark. Yeah, uh so governmental body, so you do need to have at least one of those options. In terms of what you need to have for the public, the public needs to have at least, uh they need to have reasonable access to whatever the discussion is. So that can be provided with a physical location. It can also be a live stream. You don't necessarily need to get the same option as long as they can hear anybody who's calling in remotely. And if it is an entirely virtual meeting, which is allowed under the uh laws that exist right now, obviously, the public would need to have access to that. For public participation, uh again, most bodies, every single body that we've worked with, um at least in the time that I've been here, has had a public comment option on its agenda, strictly speaking, that is not required. Although, again, there may be additional requirements per public here, so I would like to give those compliments. Public comments do not have to be there, but what we do advise, because of the recent case called Peter Stevie, City of Newton, is that if you have rules for public comment and you are allowing public comment in the first place, those rules should be uniformly enforced, uh not based on the content of the message. You can say five minutes for everybody, five minutes for or thirty minutes for the total uh number of speakers. But what you couldn't do is say it's going to be five minutes for anybody who supports this ordinance and, you know, thirty seconds for anybody who's against it. That's an absurd rule, of course, but if you were to do that, that's where you'd be running those First Amendment concerns. That's what's happening in the City of Newton case where the court said, you know, regardless of what chapter twenty one says, the First Amendment says that you can't have, uh you can't kick somebody out of the meeting because they're criticizing the police department. At the next line, uh in terms of other public rights, all members of the public have the right to access an open meeting of the governmental body. Uh, the meeting must be held at a place that is reasonably accessible to the public, this would qualify, and the time reasonably convenient to the public, any time during daylight hours is fine. Um, two AM on Sunday, somebody's basement, probably will. Um, probably, you know, you never know. Uh, again, the public does not have a specific right to participate, but the public does have the right to use cameras and recording devices. So even though the council, uh the board is not required to record their meetings, the public does have the ability to do that for them. On the next slide. For closed session, I'm gonna talk about this one a little bit more, uh just because. Uh, so for closed sessions, there are twelve options uh within chapter twenty one to go into closed session. There are other options outside of that for the code, so I'm aware that elsewhere in the code, there's an option for um discussing the termination of a teacher. They're going a little bit further than the option here. Um, there's a, there's another one for city utilities, talking about business strategy. So there's a few other options elsewhere in the code. For what we cover, uh the big ones are, uh first of all, closed sessions may only be held by a vote in open session of two thirds of members, or all members present, and it must also rely on one of these justifications. So uh discussing a record which is required or authorized to be kept confidential, discussing application for a patent, discussing strategy with council on matters that are currently in litigation, so council has to be there for that. Uh, we do have licensing examinations, disciplinary investigations and proceedings, if you're involved in those. Uh, hearings or discussion of whether to conduct a hearing for the suspension or expulsion of a student. Decision to be rendered in a contested case, if IPID uh has a contested case as opposed to a normal proceedings, we could go into closed session for the decision making. Um, specific law enforcement matters where necessary to protect uh or prevent violators from avoiding detection or facilitating disregard. violators from avoiding detection or facilitating disregard for requirements imposed by law. This is a change to our PowerPoint, so this also happens to be the one that's relevant here, but for professional competency evaluation, the individual must request a closed session. And we always advise bodies to either take that in writing or to memorialize it during the meeting, have the request made or confirmed during the meeting. It can be for the appointment, hiring, performance or discharge of an individual, as long as the purpose is preventing injury to the individual's reputation. Now, we do have an update to the slide, as I mentioned, as of November 25th of this year, the Supreme Court has come out with a new ruling on this, which says that the governmental body is entitled to give deference to the individual's request for closed session. So if you're having an interview or you're discussing an appointment after an interview, you are permitted to rely on the fact that they requested that without making a specific evidentiary fine. The law from about January of this year to November of this year, that we were advising people on was that you didn't need to make that specific evidentiary fine. Now you don't. And I think that's a much easier ruling to follow, is, yes.
So is it better, so we have interviews coming up here, so better for us to ask them if they want to open or close? Like, let's say they don't work for the county and they don't know anything about this? Or is it better, did they need to request from us or we just say it's an open interview or what? That's the preference, is we should just ask them, like, it's an open meeting since all five of us are here. Do you prefer it be open or we can close it at your, you know, request?
Yeah, I would definitely have asked them at the time. So you, you can ask them in advance as well, let them know in advance, but during the meeting, say, let's say three candidates, you can say, for any of you who want to be interviewed in open session, you can do that. However, Iowa law also gives us the ability to go into closed session to protect your reputation, to avoid needless injury to your reputation. Would you like to do that? You have the full discretion to.
I just wanted to ask, because we just got updated on this this week and.
Of course. Yeah, no, as I said, it's, we've been trying to reach out to them, we've given the Court of Appeals decision to, because of course, we had that earlier type of case. And what we've been telling people is, as long as the purpose is to protect the individual's reputation, what the law allows, and they have to request it, you can go into closed session. If it's for another purpose, you know, if it's to protect the government body's interview questions so nobody else gets to hear that, and that would be an improper purpose, but anything else would be.
Yep, and like our agendas, we update those importantly too, because you have to give an option of a closed session under all items of each interview, you know, so.
Yeah, so that's the way that we do it. And then for appointments, same idea. As far as we're concerned, this covers that, is that you have the ability to rely on that request.
What about deliberation on an interview? Like, so let's say you've interviewed five people and then the full board wants to deliberate. But I'm assuming, or is that, because if you talk about, it would be covered as well?
As long as they request it. So if you wanted to go into that closed session to discuss who you're going to hire, as long as you're taking that final vote in open session, then that's fine. I think the one situation that the court doesn't quite address and that IPID doesn't quite have a perfect answer on is, what if you have two candidates, one of them says, I want to. And our answer would be. Oh, that's. I think that would be a situation where you could say, it is necessary to go into closed session, or you, first of all, you have the ability, even if somebody requests a closed session, to say, we're not doing that, we're still going to have an open session, even if they won't, even if he could. You can say, I'm still doing an open session. That's one way to avoid it. Another way to avoid it would be to say, we're going into closed session, we're going to be, you know, reviewing the individual's applications in closed session, and that's under a different exception, so that's subsection A. That allows you to review confidential materials in closed session. The other option would be, you could say, we're going to be discussing the pros and cons, but you know, again, that's, that's kind of dicey to be able to say, we are discussing this individual relative to the others, but only one of them has asked for a closed session. I think that's difficult. And in those circumstances, we might say, one of two options, either have the discussion about whether that person is going to be considered in open session, and if that person's ruled out, then you can go in closed session, or simply have it in the open session. But we don't have a perfect answer, because that hasn't come up in the case.
They can't make it completely black and white. Yeah, yeah, well, always gray.
It, it's, it's troubling, because any other circumstance, appointment, hire, performance, discharge, any other circumstance, we're talking about a single. We do have a case right now that might shine some light onto it, although I don't think it's perfect. We had a case where two different employees were involved in the dispute, and they were going into closed session for the purposes of determining, you know, who's going to put on administrative leave, what are we doing with the investigation? Does this person need to be fired? Because it was very serious to speak to these two city employees. One of the individuals requested a closed session, one of them requested an open session, they did the open session first, and then they went into closed session, and because the closed session, now I can't talk about the closed session unfortunately, but the, the closed session kind of had to talk about the other person in terms of, you know, is this person at fault? And in that circumstance, if we determine this because it is necessary to talk about the second person in closed, because they'd asked for closed session, they were allowed to go in closed session, because it was necessary to talk about what the other person did in order to evaluate that individual's competence, they could do that in closed session. It's a little rough, but that's what we've got with the current version. Could you go back to, you said the Supreme Court said. You expanded that so. Yes, yes. So the Supreme Court, the Court of Appeals in type V Butler, they determined that you have to, within a closed session, if you were doing an interview, you have to make a specific determination that the individual's reputation is going to be harmed if they answer the question. And you could only go into closed session to the extent necessary for that specific evidentiary determination. So the example that we gave for that 11-month period was, if you had a question at the end of the interview that said, you know, we run a background check, is there anything that you want to disclose in advance? And that person said, I want a closed session, and what they wanted to discuss was, you know, when they were 19, they had a, you know, they were at a college party and they had alcohol there and they, you know, that's going to come up on the background check, but they, you know, it was 10 years ago and this is what they're explaining during closed session. That would definitely be, that's kind of what the court feels was looking at, like you need to add at least a little bit of that disclosure, then you go into closed session, you can only talk about that and the rest of the interview would be open. What the Supreme Court said in type V, when they decided the case overturned the Court of Appeals, is that you don't need to have that specific evidentiary determination. If the individual says that they need a closed session, that's enough. And the court's reasoning is, you don't really know in advance what's going to be reputation on the part of both, it's not necessarily obvious. So somebody, you know, you can ask a completely benign question, like, you know, can you tell me about a time that you had to solve a problem at work? And maybe, maybe answering that, somebody is going to say something a little bit mean about their work. So they're going to say, at this other job that I had, or the job that I currently have, I really struggled working down to the. You know, with, with the way that they've been supervising me and that, that would be a reputation harm. Or if you're, if they're talking about their salary expectations, that could be a reputation harm, especially if they're not hired, they're hired, you know, they're going to interview somewhere else and they've already disclosed, well, I mean, I'm willing to work at 60 to 57. All of those would be considered potential harms, and so what the Supreme Court said is, you can have the whole thing without having to have a specific determination, as long as they requested it, and as long as it's for the purposes of the reputation. Okay, thank you. So it's a much more thorough discussion. Yeah, I think we're, I'm glad, that was good discussion. Just a few more, purpose, or sorry, purchase or sale of real estate before that transaction is closed or before it's abandoned. That, that's for the purposes of preserving the governmental body's ability to get a good price or, you know, buy a good price. So once that closed session exception no longer applies, because abandoned or sale, those records, closed session records become available to the public. Security procedures can go into closed session if necessary for the protection, or for what those security procedures protect. So if you're talking about your new cybersecurity system, or if you're talking about the way that yours law, you potentially have a section for that. And then there's a hospital exception, which is long and common, even doesn't apply here, so I'm good to skip that as well. Next. Nothing in chapter 21 requires a governmental body or governmental body to go into closed session. So just because it's requested doesn't mean you have to do it. There may be other sections of the code or other areas of the law which require confidentiality, but at least as far as chapter 21 is concerned, if somebody requests a closed session, let's say for an interview, and you say, no, we're doing everything in the open, you are well within your right. Same for termination theory and the same for. No additional topics can be discussed. The session must be recorded, detailed minutes must be kept, and what detailed minutes means is, there needs to be, it's not quite a transcript, but it's closer to a transcript. Ordinarily, minutes do not need to have a summary of all the discussion that happens, but a closed session does, and this is for the purposes of redundancy. There must also be that audio recording, and those must be kept for at least one year as confidential access. Members can't be excluded from the closed session unless there's a conflict specifically related to the purpose of the closed session. And then final action, whether you're hiring somebody, terminating somebody, voting on a legal settlement, agreeing to sell at least property, whatever it may be, that must happen in an open session, even if all the deliberation leaves into it, happens during closed session. And then there's exempt sessions. Chapter 20 essentially just covers with a different set of rules. Strategy and matters related to employment conditions of employees of governmental body who are not covered by life, bargaining agreement under chapter 20. Essentially, when it says exempt session, this isn't not covered by the code, it's not a closed session, it's just a completely different set of rules for this specific topic. Essentially, the way that the legislature looked at it is, when they were drafting this, there was this other set that already applied. Chapter 21 applies to everything except for this type of session. For public records, and this should be a little faster. I don't know how long we've done so far, but I would just get this. For public records, the big thing for public records is that it only covers existing records of the governmental body. So you see, public record includes documents, tape or other information stored or preserved in any medium of or belonging to the governmental body. So this includes emails, this includes audio recording, if there's an audio recording related to the government's business, this includes, this can include handwritten documents, this can include, you know, any sort of digital or physical record. A lot of things are, of course, electronic these days, and so portions of chapter 22 are written for, you know, back in the day when you had it in filing cabinets. But chapter 22 is still written to be flexible for all types of these, and they're all considered public records, if they are records of the government, or as you can see, the second definition, records relating to the investment of public funds. Again, the key there is chapter 22 only deals with public access to existing records, so it never requires the creation of a record, with one exception, we'll get to that at the very end, but it never requires the creation of a new record, it never requires you to modify a record, it never requires you to do original research to answer a question, and it also has nothing to do with retention. So it only has to do accessing a record that is in possession or the control of the governmental body. So for props, I have my government issued cellphone and my personal cellphone. I like to keep them separate, I think that's best practice, but it is the content of the record that is the nature of the record, rather than where you, that matters. So if I were to be conducting government business, doing something related to a case, you know, having a back and forth email text message conversation with one of the complainants who has a case before IPID on my personal cellphone, it would still be a public record. Likewise, we have a case at the bottom there, 24 AO 0008, involving a police officer, and essentially what happened with the police officer, he's going through, I don't know if he was going through the door, or it already happened, that he was talking about the custody of his kids. He was talking with his lawyer, he was talking with therapists, he was talking with the school, he was having all sorts of sensitive conversations on his government issued device. And that's not best practice, but it is, those conversations, because they had nothing to do with his work as a police officer, they were still considered. They weren't subject to disclosure under chapter 22. So it is the nature of the record, if, if any of your employee, if any official is doing something related to government business, and this is the distinction between 21 and 22. Chapter 21 only applies to governmental bodies, which is the voting boards. Government bodies, which is chapter 22, is everybody employed by the government. Again, we advise to keep them separate, so for best practice this year, if you have separate devices, that's wonderful. If you don't have separate devices, we always tell people, at least have a separate email account. Again, it's not required by the code, but if you have a separate email account that is like on you, davidturner@tampacounty.gov.
That's on this one.
Awesome. If you have something like that, and you do all of your government business like that, it's like, even if it's on your personal device, it's like putting on a glove when you clock in at the beginning of the day. You were doing all of your business, shaking hands, using that glove, you go home and you maintain your work-life balance. That way, if there is a record request, they don't need to go into your phone, or at the very least, they don't need to go into your account, because you have it all stored on Microsoft or Google or whatever online platform. Well, if we look at our, yes, counting email on our private stuff. It's not. Yeah, if, if you have a separate device, that's best, but if you, if you only have, you know, two separate accounts and you're using the same phone, there's nothing in the code forbids that, we just say, keep whatever separation you're able to have. That way, you know, I, I see all the time, especially with smaller cities and counties, somebody will just have the, you know, Bob Jones at something or other dot com. And then if there's a record request for that, there's a mixture of all of the things that this person does as an individual versus all of the things that this person does as a, you know, local city official. And people understandably get a little bit anxious about, you know, now somebody needs to go through and make sure that we're getting it. Okay, so keeping them separate means that if there was ever that question about whether something's been disclosed, it would just be on your supervising, you know, panel, then you're comfortable with saying, well, this, this belongs to the government. I think it's a good way to do it. For the right to examine public records. Anybody's allowed to. Anybody can examine, photograph or copy public records without charge while it's in the physical possession of the governmental body. Now, that mostly applies to physical records, so, you know, back in the day of filing cabinets, this is when you bring things out, the lawful custodian part of their duties under chapter 22 would be to stand there, where you have everything laid out on the table and take pictures of it. Thankfully, we live in the digital age where you are no longer, you would not be required to give somebody access to your computer, like your database online. Okay, so even if you're staring over their shoulder, that's not something that's required by chapter 22. By and large, what we're looking at for the public's access now is that copy rather than examine ability, although technically speaking, if you have something like a, this is especially true for like property records, if you have a public record that is a property record, that might be something where somebody would come into. I've seen that recently with, especially those very large diagrams that you print that you get, you have whether it's just a piece of land or, you know, some installation on that property, sometimes those are very large, it's hard to print those, and you might have somebody come and the easiest way to do it is just examine that, well, it's in the possession. So you do have those options. If it is treated as a public document for one person, then it is available to everyone. So be published on the internet, there is no special relationship that's recognized within chapter 22. Other areas of the law may have those special relationships, so something like FERBA or HIPAA. But at least as far as chapter 22 is concerned, if it's a public document for one person, then it is for everyone. If it's confidential, it's confidential.
I have a quick question there. So having had that 790 pages reviewed in a business, the only thing I keep anymore is the stuff I write on. Everything else that we did here, Karen has it as a record, so this technically then is a public document, writing a note? I, I, I will make, I will be clear about.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so it can be, there is a draft records exception for notes. And honestly, if it's. So again, chapter twenty two doesn't cover retention. If you, if, you know, I keep notes during meetings too. If I keep notes and it's just to say, ah, you know, I forgot about that, I need to make sure that I get this now. I write it on the back of the agenda. You know, somebody could ask for it, but if I throw that away, you know, two days later, as long as that's consistent with your retention policies, chapter twenty two doesn't care. So you don't have to keep it. On the other hand, if you were, you know, chapter twenty two doesn't distinguish about whether something's, something's typed up or whether it's handwritten. So if you were handwriting something and then using it to make policy, that might be different. I don't know what the note is. Um, we do have, we have a case right now involving a mayor's speaking notes. And I think once we have a decision on that one, it'll be a little clearer, but it's kind of a novel. Kind of a novel issue for us. Um, not too much of one, obviously, again, most documents aren't considered belonging to the government. So if you're just writing something on the back of this, you know, not planning to spread it in the future, unless somebody happens to request that in the intermediate times, and even then, it might be covered as a, yeah, as a, I'll have this at towards the end of the book, I think, but the research or preliminary documents. Thanks. Um, requests can be anonymous. Nobody's required to fill out a form, show ID, uh, provide a contact name or physical address or uh, anything like that. The only thing that's required is enough information to give them the documents. So they need to provide something, and that's just kind of a matter of practicality. But they can be anonymous at that point. Uh, for compliance. Um, this slide's pretty straightforward. Every government must designate a lawful custodian. Lawful custodian under the law, they kind of use the terms interchangeably. It means the government body currently in physical possession of public record. But within that government body, uh, you also have to appoint somebody, or at least designate, you know, there's going to be this official or this employee or multiple people who are given that responsibility. So within IPID, it's the IPID staff. I've seen many governmental bodies, especially smaller ones for smaller cities, where they're saying that it's just the city council because they don't have more than, you know, three people involved. So it really depends, it can be a group of people. Um, not much more to say on this slide. Uh, we, we, we include the extra information just in case, you know, people want to reference it later, so that's available for you. It's not necessary. Uh, for chapter twenty two, chapter twenty two does not have exact time requirements. You'll often hear, uh, there's a very common misconception about this ten to twenty day. Um, and that's just not part of chapter twenty two. Um, there is not an absolute twenty day deadline on, uh, finding and producing those records. So what we look at instead is what's reasonable, given the nature and scope of the request. If you have a request that just says, I want your meeting agenda from last week, yeah, that's probably going to be, you know, minutes agenda. All of those are routine requests. There's no question of confidentiality. They're presumably stored in one place, and so turning that over within two, three business days is, you know.
If, if it's published on the website, can we just refer them to that? Yeah, what do we have to physically? Okay, so we don't have to physically provide the document if it's.
No.
Downloadable on the website.
You can, you can email it to them. Um, what we would say is if, if it's published in the newspaper, that's might, might not be enough. But if you say, you know, here it is on the website, it's right there, you can refer. Um, yeah, I, I think that's. I think, could you go back just a little? Um, yeah, so for routine requests, again, generally as soon as possible. There's no specific timeline, but, you know, again, what we're looking at is reasonableness. If there's a request for hundreds of thousands of pages of documents, or if there are multiple different sources, or there's a lot of review that needs to happen for confidentiality, or if you're reviewing a video which just inherently takes a long time, um, those requests could take weeks or months, and that wouldn't necessarily violate as long as it's reasonable. Uh, part of that reasonableness calculation, according to the court, they've added communication factors in a case called Bell and B. Reynolds. Part of unreasonable delay is also unreasonable lack of communication. So they talked about acknowledging the request when it comes in, uh, making clear that you intend to comply with the request, saying that, you know, here's, here's an estimate for how much time it'll take, or an update if there's a delay, or rolling production of records if there's a lot of records requested. You can provide some of them and others later. So in any of those cases, uh, what we're looking at is reasonable communication avoids of finding unreasonable delay. Uh, for supervision and fees, fees, uh, may be charged for the production of records. If you have a request that takes under thirty minutes, generally speaking, there should be provided for free. Um, what the code says is that the custodian should make every reasonable effort to provide those at no cost other than copying costs, so you can charge for paper, you can charge for ink. But if you're taking ten minutes to respond to a request for copies of minutes, whether you're going to do it physically or electronically, generally speaking, the time taken in that ten minutes is considered routine. It's not chargeable under chapter twenty two. On the other hand, if you have a request that is not a routine request, that means it takes over thirty minutes, um, then you can charge reasonable actual costs. So actual costs are directly attributable to examination. Um, and you can make the fulfillment of the record request contingent on prepayment. So you can ask for it in advance as a security to make sure that they're not going to suddenly abandon things once the records are paid. Um, the estimated expenses do need to be communicated in advance. And again, those direct costs include things like printer ink, printer paper, includes the hourly rates of the employee's response to it, and it includes, uh, you know, if you need to, if there's IT services that need to be called, if there's some sort of, uh, if you need like a USB drive or mailing costs, all of those are direct actual costs that are incurred. What you couldn't charge is things like electricity, um, the other benefits that you pay to an employee. So something like their insurance or four oh one, uh, four fifty seven mashing. Um, those couldn't be charged. You also can't charge for the cost of creating the records in the first place, and you can't charge for the, um, the cost of like equipment that's used to produce. So you can't charge, you know, here is the depreciation of the purchase rate. Although we've seen, we've seen people do that. I know, you, you get, you get a very high hourly rate. We had another case that closed recently where they were charging a hundred dollars per hour um, for, based on things like the opportunity cost of what the employee could be doing otherwise. And they were charging, you know, here's, here's the overtime rates, and here's the hundred dollars. Does not work that way. On the other hand, there is no limit to the amount that you can charge. So, uh, if somebody, we, we have another case where we approved a four thousand doll, four thousand two hundred dollars, which the person then agreed to amend their request, and they're in the scope of it, that they were requesting thousands upon thousands of records. It was going to take over a hundred hours, and we said, four thousand dollars is reasonable. There is no upper limits. And don't be the person who asked for something that large, because that's just, that's a lot. Uh, for attorney's fees, possible legal services should or can only be utilized for the redaction or for legally protected confidential information. So if they are going through potentially confidential documents and applying their legal knowledge, that portion can be charged. On the other hand, lawful custodian, uh, should not charge for the time the attorney spends consulting with the government body, uh, the time that the attorney spends researching the law before responding, or the time that is spent compiling those records. So if you are, you know, conducting keyword searches in your emails, that should not be, at the very least, if it is for whatever reason the attorney doing that, they should not be charging their legal fees. Unless, uh, the, the custodian of the records is themselves an attorney. So we talk about county attorneys here. County attorneys also have responsibilities under chapter twenty two. So if you were to file a request with their office, even if it's not the county attorney responding to it, it is some lawyer probably employed by them. And if that lawyer is, you know, charging whatever their hourly rate is, that is something that can be charged. Despite that rule, because at that point, they're fulfilling their duties as a custodian as opposed to as a legal services. Uh, records should not be withheld because they contain a mix of material. You can only, you should redact based on confidentiality only. So if there's an email that is mostly nonconfidential, and there's one paragraph where confidential information is discussed, only that paragraph should be redacted, or major should be. On the other hand, some records may be entirely confidential. And then confidentiality, just real quick. Uh, chapter twenty two, just as with chapter twenty one, there are additional confidentiality rules outside of this. Federal law imposes many of its own. But, uh, chapter twenty two allows for confidentiality for personal student information, school records, medical records, trade secrets, as protected by law. You can see these, uh, reference numbers for twenty two point seven, we're all in the list. So the third exception, for example, is trade secrets. And if you're wondering what am I going to do on trade secrets? If you do RFPs or like a bidding process for a county project, then you might receive confidential information from a, you know, potential contractor, and you have the ability to protect their trade secret confidential proprietary information uh, that you received for your review under that rule. Attorney work product, uh, for litigation of things made by or against a public body. Um, and this includes, uh, if you have a county attorney, this can include their records related prosecution. Uh, Iowa Supreme Court has also recognized confidentiality for certain privileged communications, purchase or sale of property, product execution or sale. Um, criminal identification files of law enforcement agencies, so this includes inmate records. Uh, library records, which could be used to reveal the identity of a patient checking out or requesting information. Examinations, including cognitive examinations, but also things like student exams, medical examiners report, security information, uh, where disclosure would jeopardize life or property, intelligence data on identifiable individuals. So this can include, um, block safety or block, uh.
Traffic cam.
Yes. Uh, this, we, we, our ruling is that this is included if it's the record itself related to, you know, whatever it happens to record. Uh, information in the record which would provide for a closed session can also be confidential under this, but only until final action is taken, and there's an additional ninety day, uh, caveat there. So that's one of the more complicated rules. We advise bodies not to rely on it too heavily, but it is available as an additional basis. Um, so that's a brief coverage of some of the big ones. I have three specific ones that I like to go a little bit more in depth on. So one is personnel record, you know, personal information in confidential personnel files uh, related to identified or identifiable individuals or employees of the government or officials of the government. Um, and those files, or at least the personal information in those files can be withheld. So the reasons given for sick leave, uh, personal injuries, if, you know, there's a workplace compensation claim and somebody is injured on the job, their home address, any personal information related to that, things like their social security number, um, the designated, uh, you know, the designated recipients on their insurance plan, um, how much they utilize from their insurance plan. A lot of those can be confidential as well. And then, uh, things as basic as their birthday, their gender, those can be protected as well. Um, there's an individual in the state who requests birthdays for whatever reason. We call that as confidential. So we can go back just a little. There is an exception to that. So within twenty two seven eleven, which is the personnel records exception, there are five types of information which are not confidential, even though they are considered personal information. So the employee's name, their compensation, so the value given to them, their pay, their benefits, vacation severance payments, the general compensation plan. Um, the employment dates and positions held, their educational background and previous employment. Then if they resign them with termination or discharged or demoted as a result of disciplinary action, be documented the reasons and rationale for that decision can also, or are also, um, nonconfidential. The other biggest exception is the persons outside of government. So if you receive a communication from someone outside of the county government, if that communication is not required by law, rule, or by contract, if the lawful custodian could reasonably determine that the person would be dissuaded from reporting if the communication was made public, and if that person has not consented to have that record made public, then it can be confidential. So this is essentially to protect the ability of the public to make confidential communications with their government. It doesn't apply to all third party communications, but it could apply to, there's a member of the community who's concerned about this, but they don't want to get in trouble with their neighbors, they're giving you that. This can apply to, um, job applications, and this can apply to things like witness reports, nine one one calls. Um, again, to the extent that it identifies the person. So if somebody just forwards you some information, you can cut out the portion that covers them if all of those rules are met. But the information itself, if it's just, it, it doesn't identify them, that might not be confidential. Uh, now, we do have two recent Supreme Court decisions that affect job application specific. And we want to make everyone aware of this because it comes up for just about every government body. Uh, first of all, job applications from external candidates who are not currently employed by the government body can be protected. However, internal candidates, according to the Supreme Court, like the Shabbas, are not protected because those are not from persons outside of government. Uh, and also, according to a case from February of this year, Dixie Scott County does not apply to application to fill in the light of law. So this was a board supervisor's case, so they have, uh, twenty something applications for a vacancy in supervisors on a board. They were going to select one of those people in lieu of a special election with a vacancy appointment. And those applications, according to the Supreme Court, were not entitled to the same protection that other applications would be. Um, now, technically speaking, the ruling was specific to board supervisors. We are advising that the same ruling, uh, the same rationale would likely apply if you're a city council, if you're a township, if you're doing any sort of, um, vacancy appointment. It does still apply to other physicians, though, so if you're employing a city attorney, if you're choosing, you know, another attorney to work for the board, if you're choosing a clerk, if you're choosing anybody like that, those still appear to be protected under the law despite that case. Uh, the last big exception, the draft records exception, and we're almost done, I promise. Um, custodians can withhold tentative preliminary drafts speculative research material, uh, prior to completion for its purpose. Um, so once it's used to enact policy, once it's presented during a meeting, once it's turned over to somebody for the enactment of policy, once it, you know, is presented in its final form in any way, that's when it's no longer protected. But, you know, let's say I were, for example, somebody could not request the draft emails in my inbox. I have a few of them related to cases. If I'm drafting a recommendation to my board for a case, or if I'm, you know, if I have a notes, uh, set of notes that I have for a particular case that I'm researching, all of those would be protected under this rule. On the other hand, once it exists in its final form, um, even if you present it at the meeting and they say, well, we're, we're going to table this for additional amendments, once it's presented, it's no longer. We do have that, which is not going to be readable, uh, but which I will make sure is available. Um, police investigative file, I'm not going to cover this in any amount of detail. Just be aware that the, there's a balancing test that the courts apply for this particular exception. I don't think you deal with this confidentiality rule often. But police investigative files have confidentiality, it's just a quality of confidentiality. And if you want, you can read more. This is like the most litigated issue under chapter twenty two with the most interpretation. So lots to talk about there, but not necessarily, not necessary for this. Uh, this is the one exception where you are required to produce something, um, despite the general rule that chapter twenty two only applies to existing records. Twenty two point thirteen says that if a government body involved in legal dispute, when you have a settlement of that dispute, upon request, somebody can ask for a summary, a brief summary for the identity of the parties involved, the nature of the dispute in terms of the settlement. If that already exists in the, in the settlement agreement, then you're covered. If it doesn't already exist, they are allowed to affirmatively request that and receive a sum. So that is the one time that you'd be required to create something that doesn't already exist. Confidential records can be released as ordered by a court, um, by the lawful custodian of the records or by another person who's authorized. So just like with chapter twenty one, which doesn't require you to go to closed session, chapter twenty two does not require you to maintain confidentiality. Other rules may, chapter twenty two does not. And then this is the very last slide of the presentation, just to cover the penalties briefly, because there have been updates to the law. Uh, with House File seven oh six, asked by the legislature this year, in fact, that is of July twenty twenty five, the penalties for chapter twenty one have increased. It used to be a hundred to five hundred or a thousand to two thousand five hundred for chapter twenty two, uh, which is still what it is for chapter twenty two. However, chapter twenty one has been raised to a minimum of five hundred dollar penalty and a potential maximum load of participation for twelve thousand five. and a potential maximum note of participation for $12,500 per individual. So they are taking chapter 21 violations more seriously under the new law. Other penalties include injunctions, orders of defiance, order of payment of costs of attorney's fees, and removal of repeat violators. So the way that that's written is if you are found in violation, which didn't happen in this case, if you are found formally in violation by court or by IPID, on the second offense per individual, there is an option for removal. Again, that doesn't apply here, but. Anywhere that the laws underfess, big damages are not assessed against officials who vote against, refuse to participate, engage in efforts to resist the violation, or, and this is important for receiving advice, if you receive a formal opinion from the attorney general or rely on a formal opinion from the attorney general, if you receive the advice of an attorney written or memorialized during the meeting. So if Mr. Corrine, is that pronounced here? Yes. If Mr. Corrine provides his opinion in writing, then you can rely on that board for the Public Information Board. If you reach out to us and we give you advice, we rely on that, and the court tells us that we were wrong, then you are also protected from those damages, which is services we offer. So that does bring me to the end. I don't know if I, I don't believe I've seen it in an hour.
You did, I think we were really close, yeah. You did.
So that does bring me to the end. If you have other questions.
Inside the door.
Yes.
One, so the 24-hour minimum notice in your advisory budget, it says as long as it's attached to an outside area where the public can see it, it's 24 literal hours, not 24 business hours. It has been litigated. I've seen some, some of your opinions that have come out and always cite that. Is I your opinion?
Yes, our opinion is that the 24 hours is, should be written.
What's that?
Our opinion is that the 24 hours should be written literally. So if you have a, you know, it doesn't matter how long, you know, granted, if you have an additional public notice requirement that requires more, and I know that that's the case for certain actions that the county may take, that may be more than the 24 hours. So this is just the baseline for all governmental bodies. For the agenda, and I'm worried that Mr. Corrine had asked this question, our interpretation is that it's 24 hours flat, not 24 hours, not including weekends or holidays or.
And if there is a violation, if there's a complaint made against it, you would say your opinion and asset advice.
We would say 24 hours is the requirement, as long as it's actually available to the public. So if you have a, the, we say for best practice, and I think this is what you're referring to. If you have a, let's say you, you post your meeting notice at like 3:00 PM on a Friday, and your meeting's the next Monday, that's fine, as long as it's out there on the door. If it was way back there, theoretically accessible to the public, but this is longer than the weekend, which nice.
It is a lot.
Okay. That probably wouldn't qualify because it wouldn't be available.
Sure.
Even if this is a public area and it might otherwise qualify, it wouldn't have been available for 24 hours. But if it was out there on the door, it was fine. Okay.
Mr. Corrine won't like that.
I know. It's her. It's her, okay.
Mr. Corrine would like. Second, on a ruling forum, if there's an interested party in a particular topic, they're seeking an actual vote. You know, like, it's not really addressed in your presentation, I picked that up. And so if somebody has an interest in getting something passed, and they talk to three of us, and they go, oh, we've got it. You know, and they're pushing and lobbying to get the opinions, is that a violation?
Probably not. So the, are you aware of the Hutchinson-Dichell case? So there's, this is the Warren County case, is the way that people often refer to it, from 2016 or 2017. This was a case involving a three-person board of supervisors. They were passing a really controversial budget that was going to cut a lot of people, cut a lot of programs. But they said that it was necessary to balance the budget. The previous supervisors, essentially, they've been, they've been like a complete replacement of board. They'd come in and they were going to change it. And so they had this, it started in February, the budget was due in April or something like that. And they were going to negotiate the terms of this budget. However, because they have three people, they couldn't really meet with each other in any numbers because any two people become the majority. And so the scheme that they came up with, I hate to use that term, but I think that's even worse, of course, says, is that they had their county administrator, which is a position that they created. She came in, she spoke with each of them individually, and over the course of several weeks, she'd speak to one of them, and she'd say, so you want any budget? What are your priorities for the budget? And then she'd go to the next person, she'd say, here's what Supervisor Jones said. What do you think about that? And then she'd go one person at a time and say, well, you know, here's, here's the feedback, and I go on this. I'm thinking about this, what do you think of this? And she was having these one-on-one meetings all at the time, all these people. And what the Supreme Court says is that she had created a majority by representing them at those meetings because she was acting as an agent for them. I think that what you're describing is different. You're talking about a member of the public who isn't seeing as an agent for those other people now. If they are, that'd be a problem. If they aren't, then they're just saying, well, you know, I've already met with these other people. I want to like get you on board as well. Even if they say, you know, those other two people, they said they'd be in favor, but that's the public's fault. That's not your fault. You haven't created this program, you're not asking this person to be your agent. So I think you'd be unclear on that, as long as you are not using this to get around chapter 21. If that other person is doing it, you know, that there's, you can't stop the public from going to each of your individuals and asking for your favor. You'd be in clear.
But any employer potentially?
Yeah, we had a case of our own after Hutchinson. It's Weber versus Orange City. And this is, I think, an even better illustration, is that they had what they called two-by-two meetings. So it was a five-person city council. They had an upcoming livestock ordinance that was really controversial. And they were meeting, the mayor and the city administrator were meeting with two council members at the time, and they were doing this on purpose to build consensus. So they were saying, look, we just want to make sure that we have three votes. That way, there's no, you know, big controversial discussion in front of the public. And what we found in that case is, that's not. But again, if it's just a member of the public going to you, you can't control them. I think that, as far as I'm concerned, you haven't dealt with that fact pattern before, but as far as I'm concerned, that's different from the Orange City case and second from the law.
Under chapter 22, everything probably goes towards a FOIA. So there's no requirement under UGAS for, or not a requirement, there's not an ability to require somebody to fill out a request. Is that a statement, boy? Is that permissible under FOIA?
I can't advise on the federal law.
Okay, but are they in conflict with the general?
No, so the federal FOIA only applies to federal agencies. So chapter 22 applies to state and local. Theoretically, I'm sure there are situations where something is a record of both the federal government and the state government. But generally speaking, these wouldn't be in conflict. I guess if, if FOIA requires something and it actually applies to you because you have federal records in your possession, then you should follow FOIA. Because federal law usually trumps state law. Unless there's a carve-out in FOIA. But that's, that's the sort of conflict that I can't really advise on, unfortunately, because I'm not an expert on the federal law, and I certainly, I couldn't speak for my agency.
And one other thing, this hasn't become an issue for us, but you cite two-thirds majority to go into closed.
Yep.
Three-fifths of our board is 60%.
Yes.
Two-thirds.
See, we need four.
Would be, so we would.
We haven't had that before, but. You would either need two-thirds of the total, which would be at its former first, or you would need all of the people present. So let's say you weren't there, the three of you were there, the three of you could vote to go into closed session, even if the board with other two weren't. But you couldn't have the two of you vote, you vote again, and then go in, because that wouldn't be two-thirds, that wouldn't be all of it. Essentially, it's just, for whatever reason, I'm sure you come up with lots of justifications. The legislature said that it's a higher standard.
I think they're right, had three-member boards in mind.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, there's, there's all sorts of numbers. There are technically some boards that have like 30 members. And, you know, the math on that's going to be fun, especially, you know, so two-thirds is going to be, if you have a 30-person board, 20 people, but let's say 25 of them are present, but that's going to be, that's going to make it difficult to get in. If there's controversy. But that's something we don't often deal with because those boards are she embargaded.
We've all voted, you know, to all go in and close whenever we would, but just like if they're never getting.
Yeah, yeah. Generally speaking, the other thing is, if somebody has a conflict of interest that removes them, they wouldn't participate. But that, that almost never is pretty rare that there's a problem.
Have you published a meeting that's going to be taking place by people?
So because, so under 22, or sorry, under 21.31, because all meetings have to be an open session, there's effectively no way to have a meeting electronically. So that, even, even though we say that meetings can be created electronically, what we mean is, don't do that. Rather than, you know, there's no real way to hold a meeting. I'm sure there is. I'm sure that you could say, well, you know, we're going to hold this council meeting open. Everybody's separate, we're all going to be typing emails, and you can see them pop up in real time. Like, yes, that would be compliant, but not at that point, just calm.
Especially with me.
Yeah.
I still think Chris is going to trade the rocks.
I'd recommend it against, we can Zoom for that, right? So again, technically speaking, I'm sure there's a way to do it. I just, at that point, you're just, do Zoom or Googling or something. Yeah.
Is it, if there could be a meeting created by email, then how do you?
There must be public access is the problem. So.
So it can't technically be a meeting, but you can actually, you probably.
Yeah, there's a way to email it. There's a way.
It's technically, it's technically standard, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so we, we have suffered gathering to include Alice's thing, because it's, you're still having that.
With that, Paul and Mark could be sitting here with, that's the one.
Right in teams.
Yeah. Yeah, technically. Technically, because you could do that, it's just.
Sometimes a lobbyist network.
I think what you want to say.
There's the IP guy. Yeah. And I'm going to be over in your episode.
Did I ask a question about it? I'm just. We're going to online timekeeping, like, so I have an app on my phone or a website on my phone I use. Does that open my phone up as public for, or is it because I can access it online? This is the questions we had asked. And then, like county emails, I access them on my phone, but it's through and not like the web. So is that open up my phone? Just the email.
If you, if there were some issue, and essentially, generally speaking, even if you were opening up your phone, you would still have the ability to say, you're, I've gone through, I've turned over everything from my phone. When we say you're opening it up, what we're really talking.